Good morning and welcome to the October 22nd, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, if we could rise for a moment of silence, and this morning we have a dedication.
Thank you, Tina. I'd ask this morning that we offer the moment of silence to two individuals who we lost recently. One, Patty Lindell, longtime Kelseyville resident, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, friend, and owner of several businesses in Kelseyville, as well as former Deputy Sheriff, Darren Dascom, who passed away this last week as well after a long illness that took him away from the job he loved so much as a sheriff's deputy. So, I miss him as well.
Martha, can you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda? Any extra items? Approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are seen as non-controversial that can be moved by one motion unless somebody from the board wishes to remove an item for further clarification or questions. Any items wish to be moved from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve consent agenda, item 5-1 to 5-15.
Second.
I have motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we are moving. Let's go to our 7.4 items since we're early this morning. Consideration of the following appointments: Western Region Town Hall.
Western Region, so we have a reappointment and a new appointment. We've had a vacancy for quite some time on Wirth, and so it's just two people who are appointing, and I think we should, I think we can point them.
So, any further questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint qualified applicants to the Advisory Board for Wirth, West Region Town Hall.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna have to go to calendars, and we'll interrupt if we have to.
Aw, man.
He's ready.
Tomorrow is the 23rd. I will be going to a CC4C meeting. On Thursday, I'm going to my first department head meeting, which will happen in the morning. Later on that evening, I'll be going to the Clear Lake City Council meeting. On Friday, we'll have our first ad hoc committee for hemp regulations. And on the 25th or 26th, I'm hoping to go see the musical Chicago. And then, on the 28th, I will be back in the office to study up for, nope, there's no studying needed, we don't have a meeting, but I am going to Woodland Community College to talk to a class, English class, they always do a community study, and they talk to community leaders, and then bring out their ideas in a presentation at the end of the semester. And then, in, back in the city of Clear Lake, to start preparing for our Christmas parade. Later on that week, I will be at the LAFCO Conference in Sacramento, sneaking back here on the 31st to set up a trunk-or-treat and city Halloween for, obviously for Halloween. And just real quick, I want to mention something that happened over the weekend that I was really excited about. Supervisor Crandall and myself met with the Middle Creek Restoration Committee, which consisted of land trust board members, Middle Creek Restoration Coalition members, as well as Water Resources Department staff, Marina, I'm not even going to butcher her last name.
Del Gianni.
Del Gianni? Thank you. And Scott DeLeon. We met with Congressman John Guaramendi and Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguirre Curry to discuss the project. Very supportive, very responsive to the project, and gave us some really good ideas on how to push it forward, so, very exciting meeting. Well, we'll see what happens, what comes of it, but that was very exciting for us. And I definitely thank our staff for coming out on a Sunday to meet with our representatives.
Supervisor Simon?
After the meeting today, have a couple of meetings with constituents, also looking to work with PG&E, if the power outage does happen. The PSP happens to set up a resource center in the casino parking lot in South County. So, be on calls this afternoon, taking care of that. Tomorrow, have a couple of meetings with constituents down in South County on some development projects. Thursday, I also have an invitation to the department head meeting. So, was there two of us, or?
We can have two, if, two if the chair is not planning to attend.
So, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Because we don't, we only have four department head meetings a year, and so we have to double up on one of them.
Okay.
So...
So, we're good? I'm on for that, then?
Yeah, well, and, yes, the location is different this time, I'll give you the location.
Okay, alright. Team Lake County Quarterly Meeting is on Friday, and depending what's happening with the PSP is, that, we'll be talking a little bit about later, we'll determine the rest of the week, really. On Monday, I have a meeting at, I think, 1 o'clock with Jan Covensher and USDA are gonna be in town, and attend that meeting next Monday, the 28th. On the 30th, I have Middletown Middle School, I'm going in to talk with the 7th and 8th graders about community, how they can get involved with the community here locally, what they could do as young students to be helping in our community. The rest of the week, I have office hours, which I'll be in Lower Lake on Friday, November 1st, and then, back here on the 4th for a meeting with Carol.
Supervisor Brown?
Here? Oh, sorry, I wasn't paying attention there. So, I've got a couple of meetings scheduled for tomorrow. I'm trying to work out a schedule with Michael and with Community Development for several issues to discuss with her up there, including code enforcement, and some ideas that I've come up with on how to help them with some of their safety issues for employees. I have a memorial for Patty Lindell at 11 o'clock on Friday morning, and then, the hemp meeting is at 2, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Be with that, and working with Lars to schedule a meeting for the park discussion for Cobb, as well as meeting with some of the Cobb folks up there for our area plan discussion that we're working on, that policy as well. Next week, since we don't have a meeting, I have a few meetings scheduled, and then I have a wedding for, doing the ceremony for a wedding for one of Mook's constituents down there, and I'm looking forward to that as well.
Supervisor Crandall?
So, today, following the meeting, I have quite a few constituent meetings. Since I was out last week, I have a lot of business to tend to. And tomorrow, constituent meeting in the morning, and then, in the evening, I have a meeting with the LAF Chair and a local business owner to talk about some cleanup ideas in the Lucerna-Nice area. Thursday, there's a couple of things I have, but I, most of all, I have to go down to San Francisco to the doctor to get stents removed from my nose, so I can breathe again. So, hopefully, I can make it back in time for Clogba in Clear Lake Oaks. And then, Friday, I have a constituent meeting as well, and we don't have meetings next week, so I'm pretty much gonna office hours, be on office hours, and set any appointments that I need to carry forward for the constituency.
And my calendar, today, I'll be in the office this afternoon, catching up on emails and phone calls. I will be attending the CTA event at New Paradigm College this evening. We have some investors here in Lake County looking to see what they could do to help us, and I've invited them there, so I'm hoping they'll be excited about what we have here to offer. Tomorrow, I will be on a phone call for the DC trip for a rebuild of Bay that I will be at next week. I will be meeting with Fish and Wildlife at 10:30 at one of the levees that we have issues with in the Scotts Valley area. And then, I'm driving for the cross-country meet, we're going down to Lower Lake that afternoon. On Thursday, I will be in the office in the morning, and then, attending the Seroptimus Evening Meeting down in Middletown. And then, on Friday, I have a Hope Rising Governing Board meeting, and then, working with them, we're applying for a grant, so we're getting together to try to finalize that. And then, Saturday, I will be attending this Chicago Show here at the Sober Rees, and then, Monday, flying out to DC, returning on Thursday. On Friday, I'll probably be catching up on emails and phone calls. On the Saturday, the 2nd, I will be meeting with students, I believe they're from UC Berkeley, that are looking at Lake County, trying to find solutions, they're...
USF, too.
Yeah. Looking, you know, out of the box to try to come and try to help us here with some of the issues that we have. And then, on the 3rd, there's a meeting at 4 o'clock, training for the warming center that will be opening up to help our homeless neighbors here in Lake County. If you're interested in helping out with the warming center, give me a call, and I will set you up with that. It's 849-4414. And then, back in the office on the 4th. And with that, we will go to our 6.1 item, our 9:05 item, 8:00 AM item, our public input, which I have one. Denise Ogul, considered, talking about fire-related rebuild concerns. You could come up, and you have three minutes. Come up to the microphone, please.
Last year in June, the Pawnee Fire came through and took my house, and then, the complex fire came and took the rest of all my trees and everything. And I've been trying to rebuild. I picked out a two-bedroom modular, and I'm not allowed, it has to be a thousand-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bath, and I need a two-car garage according to the Home Owners Association. It's just me. I have no furniture to put in a three-bedroom house, and I just want to be made whole with what I had, which was a little two-bedroom house. Plus, I have a loan now, I owned everything before, now I'm gonna have a mortgage, and I'm a low-income, social security disability. I got two dogs, two cats, that's the only thing I grabbed when I left. And since then, I've acquired a bed and a dresser, and that's all I got, and my pets. A lot of moving around last year, especially with the fires and stuff. I finally settled somewhere this last year, but it's not a good situation. And I just want to get my rebuild, and it keeps getting put off for one reason or another. And now, they've stopped building my house, 'cause I guess it's not Homeowner Association able to, so I'm wondering if I get a waiver. As a fire victim, if there's any way, I, I mean, this is a law that they started in 2014, I moved here in 2015, to, so I was grandfathered in, so it was okay to have a two-bedroom house. But because of everything that happened to me, they want me to have this big old house and two-car garage. And I just want to know if I could get a waiver on that, so I could just get my little two-bedroom house and get back home.
Alright, well, with public comment, we're not allowed to go back and forth with discussion, but it looks like you live in Clear Lake Oaks?
In Spring Valley.
Okay, so your supervisor would be Supervisor Crandall, so that's who you need to connect with, and maybe he can...
I have been.
He can assist you with that.
Okay, so what do I do?
So, let's, we can talk more, are you gonna be here after this, or you, I can come meet you this week if need be.
Yeah, could we just make a meeting for later?
Yeah, what's that?
Could we make a meeting for some time, just you and me?
Yes, yes, and I can come to you if you'd like. Would that be the easiest, or the most?
To my house?
Yes.
No, my dog, my dog has a fit every...
Wherever you would like to meet.
Wherever you would like, and whenever you would like, I'm free.
Okay.
So, he'll connect with you.
Okay, you got my phone number, there.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing further on public comment, we will move to our 6.2 item, our 9:10 AM item, Presentation and Proclamation Recognizing October 24th, 2019, as World Polio Day on behalf of the four Rotary Clubs in Lake County and Rotary Clubs worldwide. Supervisor Brown? I couldn't get that out.
I thought there was some Middletown material, this is looking here, too, but...
Well, we're invited.
Okay. Left folks represented, Kelseyville's represented. So, on behalf of Board of Supervisors of Lake, and on behalf of the South County Rotary Club, it's my honor to present this and accept this. So, this proclamation recognizing October 24th, 2019, as World Polio Day on behalf of the four Rotary Clubs in Lake County and Rotary Clubs worldwide. Whereas, the effort to eradicate polio was established by Rotary in 1979, and to date has reduced polio cases by 99.9% since that time, and over 2.5 billion children in 122 countries have been immunized with Rotary, contributing more than 1.8 billion towards eradicating a disease worldwide. And whereas, the Rotary Clubs of Clear Lake, Kelseyville, Lakeport, and Middletown contribute to the Polio Plus International Fund every year, and whereas, today, polio remains endemic only in Afghanistan, Nigeria, and Pakistan, and in 1985, Rotary International launches Polio Plus, the first and largest internationally-coordinated, private-sector support of a public health initiative, and whereas, in 1994, the International Commission for the Certification of Polio Eradication announced that polio has been eliminated from the Americas, and whereas, in 2000, a record 550 million children, almost 10% of the world population, received the oral polio vaccine, and the area spanning from Australia to China is declared polio-free. And whereas, in 2009, Rotary's overall contribution nears $800 million. January 2009, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation pledged $355 million, issues Rotary a challenge grant of $200 million, and in 2011, Rotary's funding for polio eradication exceeds $1 billion. And whereas, in 2014, India goes three full years without a new cause, a new cause caused by the wild polio virus. The World Health Organization certifies the Southeast Asia Regional Polio Free, with polio cases down over 99% since 1989. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does recognize October 24th, 2019, as World Polio Day in the County of Lake, to be acknowledged by all the residents thereof. Thank you.
Okay. And B, Proclamation Commending Donald Hoberg, Heavy Equipment Fleet Maintenance Supervisor for his years of service to the County of Lake.
So, on behalf of the Board, it is a real honor for me to give this to Don, who is not just a county employee, but just an amazing friend to me for nearly 50 decades, and family as well, so, I appreciate, appreciate him more than, more than you can imagine. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, offers this proclamation commending Donald Hoberg, Heavy Equipment Fleet Maintenance Superintendent for his years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas, Donald Hoberg has been a valued and respected employee of the County of Lake since June 5th, 1983, and whereas, Donald Hoberg has served in public works and public services, solid waste, during his almost 36 years of employment with the county. Thirty-six years with the county, just wanted to double up on that. And whereas, Donald Hoberg began his career with the county as a heavy equipment operator with solid waste, and promoted to the position of solid waste lead worker in April 1990. And whereas, Donald Hoberg accepted the position of Heavy Equipment Fleet Maintenance Lead Worker, June 13th, 2003, and promoted to interim Heavy Equipment Fleet Maintenance Superintendent on March 2nd, 2011, becoming permanent on February 27th, 2012. And whereas, Donald Hoberg has been responsible for keeping our fleet CARB compliant, and whereas, Donald Hoberg's supervisors have all described him as hard-working, loyal, experienced, knowledgeable, personable, a team player, dedicated, amazing base player, oh, wait a minute, I just added that in there, sorry. Whereas, Donald Hoberg has worn many hats here in Lake County beyond public employee, including Middletown High School graduate, loving husband and father, and accomplished musician. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Donald Hoberg for his service to the County of Lake, and to the citizens of Lake County, and extends our appreciation for his dedication and hard work, and wish him the best in the future. He will be greatly missed.
And C, Proclamation Commending Arthur Michael Laux, Bridge Maintenance Supervisor for his years of service to the County of Lake.
I remember when, when Mike came on, it was about the same time I did, and everybody's really excited about having somebody that actually built bridges. We have engineers, we have architects, we have all these people that design and do all these things, but to have somebody that actually built bridges was a big deal for, for the county and all the bridges that were built in the meantime. It's not the, it's not the hero-type stuff that we see during fires and all that, but boy, it's been so valuable, so important to us. And the big difference between Mike and I is, he builds bridges while I burn them. So, anyway, I've recognized that readily. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, this proclamation commending Arthur Michael Laux, Bridge Maintenance Supervisor for his years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas, Arthur Michael Laux has been a valuable and respected employee of the County of Lake since April 30th, 2001, and I'm not, I'm gonna read it like Mike. I'm done with the Arthur Michael stuff. Whereas, Mike Laux has served in public works during his 18 years of employment with the county. Whereas, Mike Laux began his career with the county as a heavy equipment operator, two bridge specialists on April 30th, 2001. And whereas, Mike Laux was classified, reclassified to Bridge Maintenance Specialist on April 30th, 2010, and reclassified to a Bridge Maintenance Supervisor on August 17th, 2011. And whereas, Mike Laux supervisors have all described him as hard-working, positive, competent, capable, dedicated, valuable, committed, and organized. And whereas, Mike Laux, in addition to being a valued member of the Department of Public Works, is a loving husband and father, volunteer fireman for Hopland Fire Department, and an avid hunter. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Arthur Michael Laux for his service to the County of Lake, and to the citizens of Lake County extends our appreciation for his dedication and hard work, and wish him the best in the future. He will be greatly missed.
Thank you.
Alright, so, I'm Scott DeLeon, I'm the Public Works Director, and I'm actually, I'm gonna talk about Mike just for a moment, and then I'm gonna bring Don up here, because the, the things that I want to say apply to both of them. And, and they're, these are two pretty special guys, so, a couple of things I wanted to point out about Mike's projects, because a lot of people don't see them, and, and yes, we, we got a guy that builds bridges, and, and we don't, we don't really see those things, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of really special projects that Mike's worked on, and, and these, of course, are ones, since I've been the director, and there are many, many more before my tenure. The Hendrix Road Bridge was a horrible bridge that we had, it was falling apart, we ended up having to put a Bailey Bridge over it to, to get it through its last few years, and we replaced it with a, an arch culvert that Mike had never done before, ever. And it came with a very peculiar set of plans that it took a whole bunch of people to figure out, and even then, I'm not sure we figured out how the plans really were supposed to go, but it was a, an erector set, basically.
Passed inspection, that's all that matters.
Yeah, it did, it passed inspection, and, but Mike put that project together, again, tackled something that he had never been, never done before, and, and it just turned out, turned out great. We had a project on Seagull Canyon, again, a bridge that was falling apart, and we were going to hire a contractor to build it, and things just didn't work out, and so, we, we put a plan together, and Mike just, we tore the bridge apart, and Mike rebuilt it, and you have to understand that, that when we rebuild a bridge, we're closing the road. So, we get a lot of static, we get a lot of pressure from, from the public about closing a road, and so, he's under the gun, he's gotta get stuff done, and he's able to, to just put everything together and get things done quickly, and, and that was another project that, that he just kinda got thrown into, and, and did. He's built our sand bunkers and covers over our oil tanks on, at all of our yards. He did the head wall for the Scotts Creek, or Scotts Valley Road Bridge, or culvert project that we're just completing. So, we're gonna have a, a head wall with a gate valve and all of those kinds of things, and Mike's, Mike and his crew has done all that. And I think, most importantly, and I'm, I, I think this is one of the highlights, during the 2017 floods, we had a mudslide go over New Long Valley Road, which blocked the access to Spring Valley. And we, we came up with a plan to build a Bailey Bridge just, just to the south of where the mud flow was, at the blockage of the road, and we had Mike and his crew come out, they worked tirelessly to get that Bailey Bridge put together, and as soon as they had that thing done, we came out and we dug up the, the old culvert that was blocked, and, and the mud flow that had covered the road, and we just opened up a, a big trench to allow the mud to continue to flow, and we drug the Bailey Bridge out over across the, the opening that we created. And we told the folks in Spring Valley that we'd have that road closed for two days, and, and we just told them, "We're sorry, but it's gonna be closed," and I think we did it in a day and a half, I think, or even less. And it was just Mike and his crews, and Mike's leadership that put all that together, and just did a spectacular job. So, those are some of the, the little things that folks don't see, and I just wanted to highlight some of those notable projects that he's worked on. So, with that, Don, come on up. Don't leave.
We're in this together.
That's right. So, they are in this together. So, if you're a citizen of Lake County, you have a reason to thank these two guys. If you drive over a county bridge, and we've talked about some of the things that Mike's done, or you have reason to utilize our guard rail on side, on the side of the roads, you, you need to be thanking Mike Laux. If you're a county employee who utilizes a county vehicle, or you are a motorist that drives on a county road, you have reason to thank Don for helping provide the maintenance to those pieces of equipment. Both of these guys exemplify, and, and this is what I meant about the, what I'm gonna say applies to both of them, because they're cut from the same cloth, and, and they exemplify professionalism, integrity, dedication, loyalty, and work ethic. So, at the end of the month, we're losing 54 years of combined experience, and, and as our department ages, we're gonna see more and more of this, but thankfully, both of these gentlemen have helped mentor and, and put into place a succession plan, and they're leaving our department in a better place than where they found it. And just can't thank you both enough for all that you've done. Thank you, congratulations. And on behalf of the department, I wish both of you success and happiness in your retirement, and we're gonna miss you, but thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we had somebody from the public that wanted to come up. Come on up and use the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
I'm Gordon Haggott, I'm the county surveyor for Lake County, and I'd just like to thank both these guys for all the work they've done for the county, and especially Mike Laux, because here, about five years ago, we, we had a, we undertook a large road project for Big Valley, and Hartman Road, and a couple of other roads in the county, and Mike undertook the project to help preserve all the... the project to help preserve all the road monuments, survey monuments, that would have been lost through the road construction. So his work and that of the Road Department helped preserve those monuments. So I just wanted to add that, and thank him for that.
So the picture up there was taken in the late 1970s of the Prather Brothers Band. The lower, the left front is me, and the left top is Dawn Hoberg. A little bit younger.
He grew a mustache and lost a beard.
Thank you for your service. With that, we will move on to our 6.3 item, our 9:15 a.m. presentation by Lake County Rural Arts Initiative. Martha. Come on, and sit with us. Probably on this side so you can see your slides as you...
And if you don't mind, I'm gonna start this off a little bit.
That's what I thought you were gonna do.
And if you wanna sit on those chairs, that way you can see the slides, and you don't have to turn around. That'll help you out. And also, I'd like to invite the artists to come up to the front as well, just because I truly appreciate all that I worked with. So what happened was this. I saw a picture of a beautiful mural that popped up here in Lakeport on the fire station with the firefighters fighting the dragon. I thought it was absolutely astonishing, symbolic for us, and it changed the situation, or the scenery and the atmosphere when you walk by that building. So automatically, I started doing a little bit of research, who was involved in this, and I came up and found Martha Minzer. And Martha Minzer is leading the Lake County Rural Arts Initiative. We sat down and discussed that I wanted to do the exact same thing and bring it to Clear Lake, and we made something happen. And so Johanna, is it possible for us to go through the slides real quick? And so, we had a really dilapidated, oh, sorry, my picture slides. We had a very dilapidated building, and it was the entryway to Redbud Park. And Redbud Park is one of the better areas for fishermen to come and launch at our docks at the Thompson Harbor. And it just did not look inviting. There was no welcoming sign that had fallen away a long time ago. And this is what it originally looked like. This was the entryway to our park that is mostly seen by visitors from outside. And so let's go back to the first one. So what happened is I worked with, the Senior Center happens to own this building. Joyce Overton, who's a council member and also the director of the Senior Center, worked with me. She rehabbed the building. I went and painted the building. If we can slow it down just a little bit. It's ruined, you just saw the end product.
That's cool.
And so if you can go back to the third picture, yeah, let's not make it slideshow. So what we did is we painted the building, just to give it a backdrop, worked with the artists to figure out what color they needed. We got it all prepped, ready to go. They showed up at about 8 or 10 o'clock at night, used a light to cast their artwork on, or projector to cast their outline of their artwork on the building, and they chalked the whole thing out. And if you go to the next slide, you could still see a little bit of the chalk outline. And then they started painting it. And day by day, I would go by, give them coffee to make sure they were well energized for the project, and just catch up with them. They're amazing artists, they're amazing people, they're really kind-hearted. Keep going. And every day, it just got better and better. The amount of people passing by, seeing the difference in the community, made a huge difference, to the point, I believe, that they got the comment of, "This is the nicest-looking building in all of Clear Lake." That's how fast we can change things, right? And this is the final product that we had. This was taken at night, because they worked till about 9 o'clock at night to finish. They didn't want to come back the next day. But the level of detail of work, the level of change that has happened in that area is huge. And so one of the reasons I wanted to bring Martha and these artists here is not only to celebrate what I was able to do by working with them, but to inspire you guys as well on the board to find ways to bring something like this to your districts, and whether you connect that with the Business Association, whether you do the work yourself or you're working with them. But I think this is a great way to beautify our communities, to make people feel more welcome, to change the atmosphere that we're living in. And all it takes is a little bit of work and a single wall, and it makes that much of a difference. And it's been, it's been about a month, I want to say, since the art's been done. There was, I want to say 98% of everybody was absolutely positive about what we were doing. Maybe 2% said, "I give it two weeks and it'll already be ruined." It has not been touched, it is still exactly as it was, and everybody is enjoying it to the max. And so I think this was a fabulous project to take on. I challenge all of you to do the same thing in your communities. And today, you get to meet the people that can help you make it happen. So this is why I brought them here today.
I had a question. And maybe I missed this in the first part of the presentation, but who owns the building?
The Senior Center.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so I worked with them, the owner of the property.
Yeah, that's great.
And I'm going, right now, I'm talking to the Bait and Tackle Shop to do something similar there. And again, I got all the donations from the community. This was not paid for by the Senior Center. This was the community that came together. I showed them what the artwork would look like. They were excited. They gave me money willingly, and passed it right on to the artists and to the Arts Initiative. And voila.
Martha, if you want to show us your slides. I know Martha's been in front of the board before.
I have, I have.
With her murals, and we're very excited about the work that she's doing here in Lake County. If you could pull the microphone closer to you.
Is that live? Can you hear me through this?
Yeah, he'll be able to, if you just...
Shall I sit?
Yeah, if you could sit.
I wanted first to just kind of reintroduce us, because we are new, and you have a lot of things on your plate, so I want to make sure that you know who we are. Go for the next, it's good. Do I have a... Super, thank you. We are, again, as I said, we're young, but dedicated. And our vision is really, as we have said, is to use the arts to revitalize Lake County. And we are investing in research-based best practices. We did our homework and really went out to similar situations and said, "What's gonna make a huge difference in this county for the entire communities by using the arts?" And we're focusing on two priorities. So I'm gonna talk about murals today, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that we are doing both. The first is, our research showed a dramatic increase in things like test scores, lowering dropout rates, closing the achievement gap. And again, that's regardless of socioeconomic status of the children, college readiness, et cetera. Most importantly, we're giving an edge to our kids if we bring more arts into education, because it supports innovation and creativity, which we know for the jobs of the future, they're gonna be competing with AI and robotics, and it really gives them an edge. So that's one of our number-one priorities that we're working on. The other one is our economy. And our research showed, again definitively, that an arts destination can, again, dramatically affect the economy of an area like this, a place like this, both in tourism, and you can see some of the stats there, as well as relocation, whether it is retirement, or bringing in an educated workforce, et cetera. So those are the two things that this young organization has been working on. To move to why we're here today and looking at the murals, we realized that a best practice for making an arts destination, for bringing the economy revitalization that we wanted, that an area needs to have its own unique attraction. And murals were something that we felt we could focus on, because they're extraordinarily attractive today. I don't know if you've seen what's happening in some of the counties around us, and in some of the places in the United States, but they are, they've become really something that people will drive to see. And they're, because they're dramatic, they're also always open. You know, festivals, great, and we support those as well. But if you want to come at any time and see the murals, they're there. So it really makes a huge difference in terms of, you know, the full-time tourism. Social media, people take their pictures in front of them, and it gets spread. And again, they're drivable and walkable. And for small towns or counties like ours, one of the things that makes it so important to focus in on this initially was, that they can be implemented quickly. You heard Bruno's stories, what did it take? Two days for Michael and Violet to do that amazing...
It took a short time to coordinate, but the mural itself took six days, I believe, five days. It was amazing, how fast it happened.
And it's cost-effective vis-à-vis the impact. Even though it does take some cost, when you look at what you can do to change the narrative around a location, it's extremely cost-effective, because it will reclaim spaces, and it also changes the narrative. When we look at what happened with the fire dragons, even if you have issues in a location, if it's an artsy location, people are very forgiving. And it really changes the narrative about who you are, and people will come even if there are some issues, because you're an arts location. Talk about reclaiming spaces. That was something that Bruno, when you looked at that initial building, and then you looked at what you did, it's just an amazing, driving down that street, the difference is night and day. Okay, final, final piece. How do you, how do we do this with LCRAI? Well, our role is to partner with the community, governments, associations, businesses. As we did for the mural you saw on the previous page of the fire dragon, and also the one of the birds on the wall, we were really partnering with some businesses, some donors, and some government, and with Bruno, of course, with our supervisor, who has been fabulous. I want to also mention Margaret Silvieri and the Main Street Association, who've been really supportive. What we are trying to help with from LCRAI, and how we go through the process, is that we help engage locations that are impactful. We're looking for those things that absolutely impact tourism. So it's something that you can drive to in terms of a Main Street, travel routes, large businesses, government buildings. So it's really out there. It's really seeable. We want to help secure sponsors and donors for the mural costs, and ensure that the images support the narratives of Lake County. So you could see with the bass fishing, and we have one with birds. And here's one that Michael and Violet are also working on, a Native American, which by the way, is being sponsored by the tribe. It is an amazing piece that really supports who we are as Lake County. And we want to do that as well. So they're not just putting anything up on the walls, really putting something that celebrates us as a county. We want to make sure that, we want to help you make sure that we have professional renderings that are also buzzworthy. So like we've been doing for these murals in Lakeport, and the one that we did for Bruno, we got some artists together, some muralists. And by the way, one of the things we found out in our research about Lake County in terms of an arts destination, we have extraordinary art in this county. Not just artists, but poets and musicians and the theater. So we had some muralists that we came together, and they did images, they drew some images. And then Bruno and the people that you worked with chose the image they liked the best. And we did that in Lakeport as well. So the images, and then we make sure that the renderings are professional, that the people who are going to be putting them up, like Michael and Violet, really know what they're doing and can do it well, and make sure that it's something that's gonna last. And that it's a buzzworthy image. Again, we're looking for tourism. We're looking to make sure that people go, "Oh my gosh, I've gotta go see that," is what we're looking for. And also to encourage the public relations around it, so that there, in fact, for the Lakeport murals, once they're done, we're gonna have a People's Choice Contest. That's gonna not only, not just be inside the county, but outside the county as well, to really PR what we're doing here, so that people want to come and see it. Because again, what LCRAI is doing around arts is, as well as for the children, it's for them, but for the county, the arts, we were looking for economic payoff in terms of upscale tourism and relocation. And there we are. So our hope is that we get around the county, get other prominent buildings, and get helped by associations and the governments to carry the cost, and to work with us to make sure that we have something that really is an economic payoff for the county. Questions?
I'm gonna make a couple more comments, because you did hit on something I missed. I did work with the City of Clear Lake and their marketing committee to make a decision on which art to go with, which ended up being with Michael and Violet Divine. I'm super happy with the one that we chose. It's so bright, it's so attractive, it's just, it's perfect. And so that decision was not a unilateral decision, it was a group decision to make sure that we're getting what we want in the City of Clear Lake. We decided on a theme, which is nostalgia. A lot of people remember the heyday of Lake County. Well, we can't go back, but we can put it on a wall. We can show the old cars, the old boats, the old idea of what used to be, so we can celebrate the past without trying to bring it back in reality. And so that's what we decided to try and do with our first mural, and that's what we will continue to do with the next following murals. I also want to give a chance to Michael and Violet Divine to talk. I got to really get to know them over the course of the mural. They're amazing artists, amazing people, their diversity, as you can see, this is not at all the same design as the one that was in Clear Lake. And when I went through their website, after they told me I should probably go to their website, there's such a wide diversity of art that they do. And to have them be local artists here, I want to make sure and just highlight them and give them a chance to say something if they want to say something, because I truly appreciate their work that they bring. If you could go to the microphone, it's kind of an on-the-spot thing.
Yes. And I want to thank Martha for bringing us in, you know, to recognize local artists is really awesome. But one thing that she didn't mention, and I'm an academic as well, I'm sort of taking a break from academia right now, but in, research shows all over the world that public art like this does lower, also lower crimes, crime rates. And that's not just in the United States. I've seen research that shows this from basically everywhere. And when you have sponsored public art, it brings a sense of civic pride, and that also, incidentally, lowers crime rates. And the numbers just sort of like track it. The more, like, big public art like this there is, you see crime rates go down. So that's one of the things that I wanted to add to what Martha was saying.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anti-graffiti, we've talked, did we talk about that?
We did put a clear code over it to make sure it's protected, but as I said, we've had zero issues right now. And what makes sense with what Violet just said is, if you show something that's beautiful, people are gonna want to treat their environment in a beautiful way. Same thing happens when we fix roads, same thing happens when we fix buildings. It's not just the art itself, it's the act of beautifying and making you enjoy where you live. And I think this does exactly just that.
I agree. It showcases how much you're invested in this community, and how much you love this community, and what you think about it.
Yeah, so we moved here like a couple of years ago, because the real estate was less expensive, and we could have a beautiful studios, you know. And so adding this to our community was really lovely. And one thing we found was that the kind, and have seen elsewhere, is the kind of civic pride that it engenders. Because, you know, the 80-year-old who comes by, is like, "That's great." You know, and then like, the 12-year-old who rides by on his bike, and is like, "Yeah, that's badass." You know, to us, that's like such a wide range of meeting people and creating dialogue, and a kind of unity and unification amongst people, where it's saying, "Look, your place is beautiful," and that's what it inspired, you know. And so when, like Redbud Park, you know, people see a relationship between the art and now the space, and have a different sensation around it, and it's kind of lovely. Anyway, this is still in process, by the way, and you could come by, we'll be working on it today.
And I would have to echo that. I think it definitely brings a sense of pride to our community. Lakeport now has five murals. And I know one of the buildings...
We're not competing.
With the birds, we're not competing, with the birds was tagged many times before that painting went up. And we haven't seen, we haven't seen any more tagging done on that building, so it, I...
We want to put some nightlights on some of them too, so in the evening, it'll be gorgeous.
They're absolutely...
There's another mural going in as well, an old Pan Am clipper ship coming in down on the lake, on the waterfront building.
Great, great. So yeah, so make sure you check out the murals in Lakeport and all around the county. And Martha, just thank you for all your hard work and your dedication to not just the community and the people, but the children. And we all know that's really where we need to be focusing our, you know, all our energy, because those...
because those are the ones that are going to be taken over.
And I want to mention, we're putting together a project around that. We've had some donors come forward and they want to put monies towards putting more art supplies in our schools because a lot of times teachers take that out of their own pocket to give that. And so we're putting together the mural project and the art supplies and we're going to, our muralists are going to help us choose. And I know Bruno, we've asked you to start the process too, to choose a very prominent building if we can find one and we'll have our muralists work with some of our high school seniors to put up again a wonderful buzzworthy mural. And all the monies that we get around that, we're going to go out and get donations and sponsors, are going to go directly into the classrooms for art supplies.
I know at Upper Lake, they, they did a mural on the side of the building and it's still there, it's, it's awesome and, and there's a lot of pride in that. Also, at the Rancheria at Robinson, there's an area where, that gets tagged all the time. And one of the guys that used to do it says, "You know, I'd like to do a mural." He's an incredible artist and it was because he's seen the one in Clear Lake. So yeah, just wanted to note that.
And if we can be of any help with that, let us know.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll touch base.
Anything further, any other public comment?
I also want to say that I'm just one part of the team. I have some of my team here, but the entire board of the Rural Arts Initiative works very hard. But again, I want to say, Bruno, you are invaluable to us around this, your support, your help and Margaret Silvieri. And it's been a pleasure, pleasure working with you.
And there's more to come. Thank you.
We will move on to our 6.4 item, our 9:30 AM public meeting to consider projects and programs for the Community Development Block Grant Funding Applications under the Notice of Funding Availability for 2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're bringing Jeff Lucas, our consultant, up. It is that time of year again when we are aware that a Notice of Funding Availability is going to open up here soon. And so we asked Jeff and Andy to come in and help us conduct this public hearing and seek your input for the kinds of projects we should apply for in the round of funding which we believe is going to open up in January of 2020. So thank you, Jeff and Andy.
Thank you.
We're here to update the board on the Community Development Block Grant Program and I'm sure you recall that the program funding from this was used for, is being used for Anderson Springs as part of that project as well as for the Cobb mountain water improvement projects. And so what we've been made aware of through the Housing and Community Development Department folks is that the Notice of Funding Availability, new funds will be available starting in January. And usually the state notices us and then we have about two and a half months to prepare our applications. It's going to be a little bit different this year. They're trying to improve how they operate their programs. So for projects, for example, we want to, we're, we're going to recommend to the board that we reapply for the water line extension for the Lower Lake District and that connectivity for fire suppression as well as improving the water quality. We applied for that. It was, we did not get approved, but it's still a good project. We'd like to apply for that again. But rather than have a two-month period after July, or I'm sorry, January 1st to apply, we can now apply when the project is ready. So this year, the state will have about $70 million available because they, they've accumulated so much funds, they haven't gotten the money out. So this is an opportunity for us to apply for a variety of projects. And we'll have a little bit more time from January throughout the year to apply for a project, which means for us, we want to make sure that our engineering design work is done, we have us, the budget is completed, the narrative is done and we're close to having completed, if not completed, the NEPA process. Because it's federal funds, we have to go through that environmental review. So they're giving us more time to make application for projects, infrastructure, water, sewer, those kinds of improvements, which is good. So the project can come in when it's ready rather than having these sort of artificial times. On the programs that are allowed through this fund, we will, we will still have a period of time, about two months, to prepare the application and submit it. Projects are going to have a different timeline. When the project's ready, we submit, but for the programs, they're going to want us to submit probably about two and a half months after the 1st of January. So our thinking was to have a public meeting about this, let you folks know about it. If you've got projects or programs that you're interested in pursuing, we will work with the county admin staff to prepare applications for those kinds of things. We have a PowerPoint here, we'll go through quickly because we know we've got a lot on your plate today.
Bruno, can you give the mic?
It's just prompters for what the program can do and what it's designed to do.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. For rural areas, the state administers what's called non-entitlement communities like Lake County and the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport. These are federal funds. The intention of the, of the federal funds is to provide opportunities for folks in the, to low to moderate income levels to, to improve housing, improve infrastructure and to obtain jobs. So they do that through the housing rehab programs, housing acquisition, public improvements, public facilities. For example, the, the center in Clear Lake was a CDBG program, the senior center, it's really a public center. And by the way, I want to commend, the city did a great job of opening that facility up and fully utilizing it during the power shutdown with the showers, power, access to power. People are coming in all day and using the facility to, for their computers. It was really great. So that's a, an example of a good, good project. On economic development, you can also access funds through their programs for micro enterprise assistance, helping small businesses and doing business loans. There's also a planning and technical assistance component that is designed to help the county or the cities pursue funds to do preliminary engineering design or to do economic development strategies or things like that. The more practical use of funds is, is for use on preliminary engineering design for infrastructure projects. That's a, we think a really good use of those funds to help move those projects along. The three national objectives are to benefit low-income households, mitigate slums and blight. Again, the, the city of Clear Lake, for example, has been using these funds for code enforcement work and that seems to have been working out pretty well for them. And then also in the case of, for example, the water improvement grant that's been recently approved on Cobb to meet an urgent need created by the disaster. So in 2020, January, there'll be $3 million available per jurisdiction. That number is going to float. They haven't yet finally established that, they're still in the process of finishing it, but we wanted to get, provide you guys, you folks with an update so that you'd be aware of it and we could start working on projects and get our foot in the door early on. So community development programs, the projects, planning and technical assistance, infrastructure. I know the board is very interested in pursuing infrastructure improvements and this is a source of funds for those, for those kinds of things. The, the requirement for infrastructure improvements is that there's a 51% benefit, whether it's a sewer line or a new water line or a new system, the neighborhood that served the community, 51% of the households in that area must meet the low to moderate income level, which in our area is not hard to do. Just the nature of our, our county. Project must also address a health and safety problem and CB, CDBG funds can be used under a housing rehab activity to pay for private lateral services. And that's somewhat similar to what we're doing with the funds for the Anderson Springs Just wanted to update the board also on the business assistance activities. Under number one, direct assistance to business, businesses, those are those low-interest loans. I know we have a bit of a history with that, but that's one of the activities you can do. And then, for example, we're looking at a couple of businesses that are, that are pretty large. One of them will probably create about 35 jobs year-round, pretty, pretty good paying jobs. So what we are looking at is providing some infrastructure improvements to the site for that. So we'll, we'll see how that, that plays out. Might be a good use of funds there that we would come back to the board and, and see what you guys, see what the board thought of it. So that's kind of a brief summation of what the CDBG program can do. We're hoping that as you folks look around in your, your districts, you'll want to talk to us and talk to the county staff about projects and we'll see if they're eligible, see if we can make them work and we'll put the applications together and submit them on behalf of the county.
Okay. So any questions or comments? Supervisor Simon?
I was just getting projects, just thinking about projects right now. I know, I guess a question I would ask about the backup generation for the library, community center and senior center down in Middletown, if that would be an infrastructure project that might fall into this. I don't know if it would be under community facilities through USDA or something else, but I think-
Do you have a, do you, do you, do you have a, a number, just a ballpark number about how much?
Lars would be able to give you that number. I know we've been talking recently about the PS, PS is probably anywhere between $75 to $100,000, I think, is a general idea. It's a smaller project, but definitely a concern and I would think that would be a health and safety need in the South County at this point.
I, just our opinion, working with these different programs for this CDBG program because of the heartburn and the length of time and that it takes to access the funds, you really don't want to use these for anything less than a half a million because it's, it just takes a long time to get through the process and you don't want to burn up, you know, your administrative money or your, your grant money, you know, making an application. So one thing that we could be happy to do is look into the USDA programs and see what they could offer there. They have a grant and loan program that might be workable. And they're about to get some funds for fire relief as well.
Good.
It's that, it's just that this thing is, this program, well, the state has advised us, they're trying to improve it because it's been pretty difficult to work through. And I know Supervisor Brown's very familiar with the process and how difficult it's been to get, get out these funds, but they are improving it, but still you really want to go, you know, if it's, if it's half a million or so in that range, then these funds can be pretty useful for you. Or for something along the smaller lines, we'll take a look at the USDA and see what we can help.
Carol, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we have been in communication with Kim Van from USDA about a couple of things related to generators, not only possible assistance with those already purchased, but also purchase of ones for facilities that couldn't be prioritized at this time. So we're hoping for a response. She's indicated that they do have some funding available for that and if Jeff and Andy can help us with that, that would, that would be great.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I have three things here. One, I think that somehow, and I don't know what the exact steps are, but we need to somehow come up with a work program fund, just like in the city of Clear Lake where they've been using that for the code enforcement. I think it's called the work program fund or it, it's through CDBG somehow or another and I think it's through a revolving loan that once it gets paid back, you put it into your work program. Not sure what the steps are, but somehow we need to figure out how to do that here so we can have that same benefit that the city of Clear Lake has been seeing because, for instance, we have a county with three code enforcement officers, but we also have a city with three code enforcement officers. Makes no sense as to how we're going to clean up, at what pace with what we have. And if we can have something that can help us such as the program, work program fund, then I think that's something that we should really look into. Second is the economic, the business assistance activities. One of the things that we have not discussed enough here, and, and most other places, is unfortunately, we wait for businesses to come and we wait for businesses to be created, but what kind of assistance are we working on to offer to help generate more jobs? We need more jobs. And whatever it is that we can do to support the job creation, let's find a way to support that. And then infrastructure, I think we need to look at a focus of where is it that we want to bring infrastructure, new infrastructure. I know that the tie-in for Lower Lake to Canucktai Water through the new Dam Road Extension has been talked about for a while and obviously there was an issue with the Clayton Fire with access to enough water, so that's important. But my feelings are that that might be accessible through other pathways, similarly to our attempt through USDA for the water line we're trying to get from Findlay over to South Maine. Because to me, again, I think infrastructure, we should be looking at what is it going to do for job creation? And so for instance, I'm looking at the EDC and what are our goals in EDC? And one of our goals is the airport. I see the airport on, I think it's Highlands Road or Highlands, whatever, Highland Springs is the future of light industrial, potential manufacturing and other good-paying jobs that can come to this county. And right now, there's no sewer, there's no water and, and they just don't have the infrastructure. And we have goals at the EDC and I'd love to see how CDBG can match up with the goals of the EDC so that we can project not only what we've envisioned for the future, but we can make that a reality. And I think that if we, I think there's other ways for some of the other ones and it's important, but I also want to make sure that if we don't create jobs, we're going to keep struggling after every project that we do. But if we help to move forward and create jobs, it's going to get easier as we keep moving forward into the future. So I think that our money, our time is best spent on what's going to give us a return on our investment.
Just one comment on that. For this CDBG program, you can use these funds for infrastructure improvements. And usually the way it works is if you've got a site like at the airport where a business wants to go and what's holding them back is the fact that it lacks infrastructure to, to the site where it needs to be completed, then you can use these funds for that purpose as long as the business generates jobs there. The business has to promise to generate the jobs before we can access the money. The problem with this, one of the issues with this program is you can't build on spec, so to speak. You can't access grant funds for infrastructure improvements without having a business that's going to create jobs committed to that site and creating those jobs. And then the 51% of those jobs have to go to folks from the low to moderate income level. That's how that benefit works. So just want you to kind of bear that.
Does it work the same with the EDA where there has to be that promise or?
Yes.
Okay, so you can't just build an industrial park-
And then say, "Build it and it will come."
With the hope that people will come. It has to have already a letter of intent that they want to come.
It's the but-for argument. But we're going to come here but for, we need this road or we need these utilities or whatever it is that you, you want to build.
Okay.
Supervisor Brown?
So I appreciate what you're saying, but I do want to correct one thing. You said, "What we haven't done here." We have done here. It's just been a while back and it was before you got here.
Yeah.
So-
And I'm only speaking of my time here.
No, I get it. And it's been a couple of times, you know, they've, you know, we've, we've tried to bring businesses in. We've, you know, they've, they've loaned money to businesses and the businesses have failed and the money was not paid back to the taxpayer. You know, there's been a lot of things and there's a lot of reasons that it hasn't. I'll give you information on BORT, for example. BORT was one of the, there was a lot of energy put into that and there was some, some successes to it, but the water park in Clear Lake, that was one of them that was benefit, there were a few of them. Some of them, I think Parker Plastics was involved in that too. Weren't they involved in some of those loans?
Yeah.
Well, I was going to use them as a success. Well, I was going to use them as a success, so, but they have been...
No, they didn't borrow money.
Okay. And there were some successes. The biggest problem that we had was all of that effort went into these big businesses, these big jobs, and then when they left, it left a huge vacuum. You know, it's like, it's like you're better off creating ten businesses with ten jobs each than one business with a hundred jobs. So, so those are, and for me, you know, it's been proven over and over and over again that infrastructure is where we need to go. Let businesses come, let businesses go, let them make it or break it on their own, that way we're not getting blamed for it. The thing we need to do is make sure they have the infrastructure, they have the zoning, they have the capability upstairs to be able to run them through the permit process and all that. That's what we should be focused on, and not going out and trying to recruit businesses and then, you know, give, let's give you money to make you successful, let's do this, let's do that, because there's little incentive when that happens to be successful. We've got somebody else's money, and it doesn't matter if we pay it back, because it really, that's really the bottom line. You can promise that you're going to come in, and that's all it really requires, but unless things have changed, there's no accountability to go back and say, wait a minute, you said you were going to have all these jobs, and now you haven't done it, so give us the money back. That doesn't happen, or it hasn't happened, so. Infrastructure, legitimate infrastructure is what we really need to focus on, and, you know, I appreciate what Moke was saying about the generators and all that, we can all come up with our little pet projects and everything, but the bottom line is, I want to use this opportunity to send out information to staff, to Jan, to Scott, everybody else. You guys tell us what you need, not, we're going to tell you what we would really like to have because our constituents think that's cool. You know, we want to know what's legitimate. I do, anyway. So that's why I think we use this as an opportunity to go back, go out and, like Jeff said, anything under half a million dollars is a real, it's a lot of work that goes in. You put as much work into, you know, generating a million dollars as you do a hundred thousand, so you want to go for it. You know, if you're going to put that much energy into, go for the big projects, the stuff that we can actually get done, and that can actually, then you could go out and go and say, you bring your business to Lake County, because we have airport property out here, it's ready to go. You know, and so that's, that's the real future, I think, of planning ahead for businesses to come in and be successful.
We understand the airport development and infrastructure improvements there is a high priority for the county and for the Economic Development Corporation, and we are looking at different sources of funds for that infrastructure improvement, but it's kind of tough, because you have to have a business that's going to commit and create those jobs to access a lot of the funding that we work with in economic development. So it does get back to the commitment by the business to come to a location, and then you can pursue these funds for the improvements that are necessary. The trick is to try to get, how do you get the improvements first? How do you access those funds to provide a place for the business to come to? And I don't know, Rob, you were up here when we pursued funds through another program for the road, that Sky Park Drive?
Yep.
Yeah. So that was from a state program that they don't have anymore, but it wasn't a loan, it was just a grant, and that provided the funding off of Highland Springs Road out to the site where the Workright, old Workright building is. That worked for about ten years, and then that business fell apart on its own. And so now you have the situation where there's a road out there, you have the beginnings of a park for commercial development adjacent to the airport, but what we're trying to do is figure out, how do we balance the development of the actual airport itself and help the county with those costs, as well as the further development that needs to happen on the sewer and water situation on that commercial property, and then to revitalize that property and get some people, you know, private sector people in there. So it's just a, it's a balancing act that we're trying to pursue, to facilitate, but again, we have to be careful about making, using public funds for public benefit and making sure that if there's a private sector partner in it, that they fulfill their obligation for it. I hope, I don't know if that was clear, but...
Because we've, you know, over time, you know, we've seen some successes. Like I said, you know, we had, boy, when they leave, they, you know, we had cheap tickets, we had Blue Shield. We had Gold Mine, which wasn't necessarily something that we, you know, we brought in, but it left a big vacuum. The Geysers, at one point, the Geysers was booming, and then it died off, and that's what a lot of the problems on Cobb with, you know, code enforcement type stuff, that came as a result of, of, you know, the Geysers going down, and then it came back, and that was largely in part to the sewer, the treated sewer, you know, going back in and, you know, getting that revitalized, revitalizing that field up there. So, you know, we've seen it come and go, and that's what happens, you know, around here, but not having that infrastructure is, I think we could bring people in, bring businesses in that could stay, and smaller ones, too. They don't have to be huge, especially at the airport. Some of the better businesses that we have out there have under ten employees, fifteen to, you know, ten to fifteen employees, and they're very successful out there, they bring a lot of stuff in. So having that infrastructure out there is going to be big. And then, not just there, but as, you know, I talked with Carol about this, you know, working on a plan for South Main, and then along the corridor from Lakeport to, to, you know, Kit's Corner, where Caltrans is planning on doing all that road, those road improvements, you know, have an infrastructure along that to where we could have, you know, commercial operations and that along that corridor. So infrastructure is, you're not going to bring businesses in without it, you know, not, not, and be successful and stay here, just can't.
Supervisor Colonel?
Yeah, and I have to just beat the drum on the infrastructure part of it. I know in Lucerne, there's a place called Eurobistro, I know everyone's familiar with it. The people that own it always talk to me about that. They try to recruit people that come in, they're looking for new ventures, and they're like, this, Lucerne has a lot of infrastructure here, I already said, all you got to do is rehab it, fix it. And there's also some other, you know, societal standing issues that we have to deal with, but that's, that's a good point, and so I just wanted to emphasize on that. There's also some other local businesses that say the same thing in that area, and so, and it's a low, it's a really low income, we all are, of course, but, I mean, Lucerne, that whole corridor, it's also a main artery. So, yeah, I just wanted to hit on that.
So if I, and that's my hometown?
Right.
And so we, we still are there quite a bit, but what we, what we are requesting the board to consider is perhaps some priorities that you can give us, so that when we do our work, we're doing what you want us to do through the admin office. On, you know, the code enforcement is a good thing that you can use these funds for, for example. But then, then where would we, you know, we would, we would need to say, okay, we're going to apply those, we're going to apply those funds to this area, this area, this area. So, and then what would be the areas that you would want us to use that, to apply those funds towards, if that's the direction the board determined to go in? On the airport, it's pretty clear what, what needs to happen there, and we're working on that, and if we can use these funds for that, we'd definitely do it. We're just, we want to make sure that whatever we do, we're doing what, at your direction, and what you want us to do, because it's, we want to start working on these things and laying the groundwork, so we can get our foot in the door and get the funding, get as much as we can.
Well, my comment wasn't as infrastructure and Lucerne, I was just highlighting that notion.
Yeah.
I do like the airport discussion that Bruno brought up.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And absolutely, I'm glad you brought that up, that yes, the work program, for instance, in Clear Lake for code enforcement is specific area that showed the need for it, and I think that's the point that I'd like to ask staff to come back with. If this is what we want to do, then come back with the plan of where exactly is the most need, based on their data, based on their experience, rather than just each one of us saying, because we know our district more so than anything else versus the whole entire county, and I think that's where staff would have to come back with the best ideas on how to utilize that. And as far as the, the business attraction, I'm not looking to necessarily attract from the outside. I think the easiest and best way for our people to be successful is to support them in making them, building their own businesses here, just like you did with Classy Cakes in Clear Lake. Very perfect example. And so obviously, there's already something there available, but it's, it can extend those services to a much larger audience when you offer that to the people that live right here, and it's just that they don't have access to capital, they don't have access to, or maybe they're nervous or scared to try that. It's just like people who can afford to buy a house, but they don't, for some reason, they're not worried paying rent, but they could pay less if they actually owned a house. I think it's a similar situation, but if we offered that level of support, I'm all for the ten or less. But at the same time, if we have an opportunity for something larger to come, then let's make it come. But I think infrastructure is definitely always going to be, well, it seems like we're on a consensus that that is absolutely a part of that, but I really think that we should make sure to have a concerted effort of what, where that infrastructure is, and what's, what's the purpose for that. And I know that we need something at the airport to give reason why to offer that, and there is some potential activity going on around the airport at this moment in time that might be able to be connected to this program. So if that's the case, then maybe we already have something that we can connect to it, because I really, I think we have to look at what's best for the county, because if we can benefit from one large area that we can really upgrade and develop, then we're going to be able to do a whole lot more in the years to come than if we spread it out too thin and barely touch anybody and make an impact. I think we need to use this to make a large impact, and we need to have a county vision, not a district vision, on this one.
Susan, you wanted to chime in?
Yes, I'd be more than happy. I'm sorry, excuse me. I'll be more than happy to collect that list from all the different department heads and then bring it back to the board for their consideration in a very short period of time.
I believe that would be best to hear what department heads feel is needed in our community. Supervisor Brown stated that.
We can call back for your next agenda on the fifth.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
So, so this airport discussion is, it's been ongoing for a long time. In fact, out of a discussion that Carol and I had, a meeting that we had, and that's why I want to make sure you understand, I feel the same way. It's not a county, it's not a district thing, it's a county thing. In fact, most of the projects that I'm recommending are not in my district, but they do ultimately affect my district, because anything that...
All of it.
Yeah. And one of the things that Carol and I came up with in our meeting was, with the airport and with South Main, was, were opportunity zones, and working with staff to try to come up with the infrastructure for that, and I, that's part of what your trip to Washington is for, is about.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if you read the information that she had, of their trip back there, if you had an opportunity to look at that, but that's included in that, and, you know, to revitalize, or to vitalize it, it's not even revitalize, it's just, it's kind of stagnant. So, so, yeah, I agree with that, but I don't know, and I appreciate, you know, bringing it back at some point, maybe on the fifth or whatever, but soliciting staff and having them just come back with a, with a list of things, I don't think is, it's not where I would, would take it. I would put together the, not, not every staff member needs to be involved in it, to be quite honest with you. I think it's going to muddy the waters if you just, you know, shotgun approach, anybody that wants anything, let us know. I think we legitimize it by saying, our public works, public services, and special districts, to start with, let's get, let's get together. And then there's some, some private, you know, water departments and that type of thing that may need to be involved, or are they involved, are they included in some of this? Okay. So, so that should happen. We have, you know, water districts all around, you know, talk about regeneration, let's not make it a project for just the library. Let's talk about all the water plants and what their, what their needs are. We have the Riviera Water, we're going to talk about it here a little bit with the PSPS. They're shut down, they have enough supply for one, one day. They don't have generators, they don't have any of that stuff. So they have water supply for one day, for the whole Clear Lake Riviera. So we got, you know, there's some things that we could do collectively as a county, but I think what we should do is get, let those departments get together and then, and see what they can come up with collectively, instead of individually and just bring it to us and then we'll sort it out. I don't think that's going to, we've got to keep the politics out of it. We've got to get, we've got to stay practical. Jan's not a politician, Scott's not a politician, Lars is not, you know, all these other guys, they're not. They have a job to do, they know better than we do what their job is. Let them work out the recommendations collectively and then come back to us. That's what, that's what I would like to see happen.
Supervisor Simon?
And they already know, so I don't think it would take that long for them, I really don't. I think they could come up with...
You know, I wasn't ever trying to pick individual projects because my constituents, that was a health and safety need, is why I brought up the generator for the senior center and being affected in the PSPS. So my assumption was you were asking for a new project. We set the 2028 revisioning, you know, what we got here, we kind of got the infrastructure needs, and we've talked about what we want to do over the next decade, so I think we already have a map of where we're going on those types of things. I thought today you were looking for something else, a little bit different. I know that all that we've talked about, the South Main Annex, all those things, the water, those things are all happening at this point. So, yeah, I'd be willing, whatever projects you guys want to bring back and we've talked about, would be greatly appreciated. So my one comment today about the senior center was, something that's happening now, and something that needs to be addressed, and I know Lars is working diligently on that, and had a chance to bring it up today, so I did. And that's what I'll always do, because it is a need. And overall, infrastructure needs is exactly what Tina and Carol are going to Washington to talk about, and hopefully bring the light to that and move forward with those things. So whatever the department heads come back with as far as projects, we'll get full support from myself as they move forward, and anything offline, any other meetings that need to happen, so. So I just want to address that, comments of, you know, not trying to, if I could just say my district or whatever, it was, it was a need, and I wanted to bring it up.
Supervisor Brown?
I want to respond, because I think there's a little hypersensitivity here. My point was that if they can't do a hundred thousand dollar project, because, you know, they need something half a million, then let's put your project with several others. That's why I mentioned the water department, because there may be several others that are similar to the ones that you're asking for, that collectively, those could probably come together, but they can't individually. That was my point.
So, Madam Chair, in light of the direction you're giving us to sit down with the department heads that are involved in these types of projects, I don't know that it is even necessary to commit to the eleven-five date for return. We could do that work with the department heads in return when we're ready, because the way the CDBG process works, your board has to approve what we're applying for anyway, so you'll see it at that, at some point. And so that'll give us a little time to spend with those department heads and perhaps loop in some other agency reps as well.
Okay. Is there anything further, Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to see if there was a need for consensus or not, but I know that when the projects come back before me, I will be scrutinizing the projects for how will this impact job growth and job creation? And I don't know if we want to give a consensus from the board to say to the directors, the departments, the director departments, the directors of those departments, to focus the idea of their projects to be focused on job creation.
Supervisor Brown?
I agree with that, but I would like to take that one step further, because a lot of this, if you go back to the, I think the slide before this, the priority is, is, let's see, yeah, the bottom, used for housing rehab activity. Housing is, you know, that would create jobs, you know, building those homes, for sure, but a lot of what our problem is for businesses is lack of, lack of housing for, for the workforce, you know, that's, that's an issue. So I think if we combine those two with, you know, job creation and housing, we're meeting an ultimate goal that's, that we want, but we're also tasked with by the state that we have to provide opportunities for this. We don't build houses, but we can create opportunities for them to be built, so I think we should include that in there as well.
Right. I'm definitely not against the housing. I do know that I'm working with a developer in the city of Clear Lake. They're not going to be building houses, they're going to be shipping houses, because it's cheaper to build them elsewhere than the cost that you can sell a house for versus how much it costs to build it, is just not the percentage of profit that, that makes a developer able to do work here. And so we can't, we can build single homes, one at a time, which unfortunately takes a long time to bring back an entire community that may have lost many homes, but if we want to build subdivisions, we're not going to see it the way it's built in other places. Our houses just aren't valued high enough for the material and cost of labor here in California.
No, I get that. Let me, okay, let me give you an example of that.
But we do need houses, we do need houses. I'm not, I just don't think it would create the jobs of building houses that we assume in the past it has, that it would today.
Well, it will, it will create jobs. I mean, it trickles down, you've got the guys building the house, you've got the guys buying the material, you've got Kelsville Lumber, you've got Mendel Mill, and we've got, you know, all the way down the line. There's a lot of jobs created, but here's, I don't, I think the day of subdivisions in Lake County, we, I don't think we're going to see a subdivision, substantial subdivision in Lake County anymore. I just don't. You know, there's, because we have subdivisions that are already, already, have already been built or, or planned for, that can't be built right now because of lack of infrastructure. We have the Riviera's, we've got even some areas in Hidden Valley, you know, if you got, if you, if they had the infrastructure in there, those, those infill, and that's what, that's what I think we really need to focus on, is that infill. infill. And that's what, that's what I think we really need to focus on, is that infill of existing inventory that we have for, in the, in the infrastructure to support that.
Right. Definitely a different problem than in the city of Clear Lake where they do have the infrastructure and they're just waiting for someone to build.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Well, I think we're talking two different subjects here. As far as Hidden Valley goes, I know they have the infrastructure at this point, working directly with CST manager to get a water moratorium lifted down there by the State Water Board. There's 800 lots that could be built on there that currently folks do want to build on, they just don't have availability to water. So there's, you know, another 800 homes in South County. We also have a large project that's going on, a 16,000 acre development that potentially could provide 1,200 homes or more. So we're going to see some real infrastructure and community building, especially in the South County. It also has potential of Valley Oaks. So there's some real opportunities that are coming up down the road here. But continuing to work on infrastructure is needed, improving our sewer down in South, South, the South County is going to be something I know that needs, you know, is a project, I think, that's already in the works, that's going to be happening. So when I was talking about the project, I thought those, today you were looking for other stuff that we were going to move forward going forward, not things that we already are working on to really bring to light, to really improve the economic base here in Lake County. And so excited about those projects and moving forward. And, and yeah, whatever the department's heads come back with, we'll give them that information, or at least that support that they need to help go after the right funds. So I'm excited about the future of Lake County. We're always talking about, you know, where we are, where we're coming from, but I think the future's bright, especially in South Lake County. There's a lot of projects happening that are really going to improve the housing and overall general welfare and job opportunities here in this county. And that's going to help everybody.
In fact, you have a planning commission on Thursday that's all about that.
Yeah.
If there's nothing further.
If I could, I just want to make sure we're understanding your direction and moving in the direction of consensus as well. So we began the discussion by talking about the Lower Lake Inertie project and our intent to resubmit that. That would be under the NOFA itself, correct Jeff?
Correct.
Do we have consensus from the board that we should resubmit that project? That was your board's priority in the past.
I have a question about that. Do we know approximately what the cost of that out of the 3 million would be?
It would not be one of the $3 million projects. It would be under the NOFA, which has 70 million available.
Yeah, it's a separate, separate.
It's a separate one? It doesn't take away from our three?
It actually would take away, and this is where it's a little fuzzy, because we haven't gotten clear direction yet from the state, but we didn't want to wait for it. We wanted to get everybody thinking about this stuff so that we are competitive. And so, right now they're saying, we will be able to apply for, for public infrastructure and programs, $3 million. And that's been their standard for the past several years. They may bring it up. But to your question, if we pursue the project in Lower Lake, that's about $1 million. So that would leave 2 million. Now, I don't want to complicate this, but I just explain, the, if, if for example, there was an infrastructure project needed at the airport for a business to come there and the business committed to it, excuse me, we could access up to $5 million for infrastructure for that project without taking away from the 3 million that's been allocated to us at this time. Because those programs, the economic development, over the counter program, is project specific and they allocate about $20 million annually for those kinds of projects. But for when we talk about public facility for community benefit, then, then we have a $3 million allocation that we need to work with. And I hope I'm explaining this.
You're, yeah, you're explaining that it's complicated.
It is kind of complicated.
And until we've had the discussions with the department heads to dig deeper into what the other project would be, it's a tough question to answer.
What you're telling us is there are multiple buckets to pull from, and that's saying yes to the Lower Lake Inertie, which is important because of what happened during the Clayton fire. We don't want to see that happen again, that they would not take away from pushing through with some other infrastructure programs, potentially.
Correct.
Caveat, potentially. A lot of maybes, but possible.
Supervisor Simon?
That just has been a project, absolutely, you know, that hopefully we can move forward with as a board and continue trying to get that done. I know they're in a transition right now as far as the manager of the department and stuff. But yeah, that's a project I know they were focused on, working diligently on with you guys, and would like to continue that operation, or that, that grant.
Jeff, do you have more to?
And, and again, you'll have an opportunity to review and approve our submittals before it goes anywhere. So, so we'll have a better sense of what priorities the department heads identify as well, so.
You talked about code enforcement, and Bruno, you had mentioned something about how they use something like this to.
The work program?
Right. Is, this is part of this as well, right? It could be potentially an addition?
Yes, yes. In the application process, that would be a program.
Right.
And so we would put that narrative all together and, and it would come before the board and you would approve it by resolution and then we would.
The reason I bring it up is because I know we said there was going to be three department heads and community development would be a part of it.
I think it would be public services, public works, community development, and special districts.
Okay. And they just stood sure that there's emphasis on code enforcement as well there so that we can have that as a.
It's a, it's a part of it, yeah. Yeah, it's all, that, that makes sense.
I just want to highlight because it's always a situation, it's always an issue on, on my district, but of course, the whole county. I mean, we, you know, like, like we talk about.
Is there anything further from the board before I open up the public? I'm going to open up to public comment. If you have any public comment, you have three minutes. Say your name.
I'm Jan Coppinger, Special District Administrator. And Jeff, you'd mentioned there was a change in C D B G, and I'm just wondering, because two years in a row, the NOFA came out, I had projects that very clearly fit in that NOFA submitted, and I'm told, no, they're really only interested in funding housing. And I said, but it fits the NOFA. And I was told, well, disregard the NOFA. They only really want to fund housing. Has that changed? Because I don't want to spend months doing applications to meet a brick wall that said, yeah, the NOFA said that, but really all we want to do is build houses. Has that changed? Or is C D B G really dictating how we spend our money?
C D B G, at the state level, the management has, has changed. The people that were very difficult to deal with are no longer there. We're able to get rid of them. I don't know where they went and I don't care. We have, we have good people in there who are operating now. I've been re-engaging with them. I, I trust them. They're, they're not the same people. They know they have problems. This, the state of California is the worst state in the nation for getting these funds out to communities like ours. They're just, they haven't been doing anything well. And that's why there's all this money stacked up that now they realize they need to provide. They weren't doing their jobs very well for a long time, five, seven years or so. So the answer to your question is, it's, I would be happy to talk to you and go through what it is you think makes sense, if that's part of the, the system, the process, to find out what we can and can't do. And we'll do all that without you having to put a ton of work into it. That's what we're here for. We, if we understand the project, the, the essentials of it, we can find out real fast if it's going to fly or not and tell you. So we don't burn down a bunch of your time.
And, and just for the record, we have had to turn away two very lucrative businesses that wanted to build in the Kelseyville area. Not only would they have brought in jobs, but they itemized, one of them, $300,000 a month he's paying to storage in Mendocino County to store wine. The trucking, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that could have been kept in this county. It was very painful to say, we can't treat your waste. And it would have cost him millions to put in something. But if we can start letting these businesses come in, and they're good clean businesses, they're not industry, it's going to pollute us and all that. But, so yeah, there's definitely a need. The Inertie, Lower Lake, I just want to point out, that is eligible for H M G P funding. It's a 75% grant with a 25% match. But I would hate to use up infrastructure money for something that's actually eligible for other funds. So I hope Lower Lake is looking at that. But now that it's in the Hazard Management Plan, it is eligible for that funding. And we're encouraging other entities to be looking into that as well. But.
Thank you, Jan.
I want to follow up with you because I'm somewhat familiar with what happened there. And what we're going to try to do is angle in on whatever accessed the most money for us with the least amount of pain. So if, the more I know about, and I'm somewhat familiar with that project, rather than going through, you know, public benefit to the housing side, we could say public benefit to job creation. And if we had this infrastructure capacity, then that business would have come here. We can use that language and that approach to, to access those funds. And see, that would be, going back to your question, out of the $6 million fund, not the $3 million fund. So, but, but we just have to understand and know as much as we can from you folks, all you folks, what the heck it is you're, you're wanting, what projects are, and get as specific as we can so we can figure out the very best way to use this program and the other programs out there. We just want to help facilitate that.
Thanks.
Is there any supervisors about the?
So, two things. One, I believe we use C D B G for the Clear Lake Oaks sidewalk project, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's not housing. And I know that Clear Lake used it for their Phillips and 18th resurfacing as well. So that's not housing either. So hopefully things have changed since the last time that you had that experience. Going back to your now 3 million, 6 million, the different buckets, can that be a part of the conversation with all the department heads? I want to make sure that we're submitting for the maximum amount of dollars, and it's all about capacity as well. We need to be able to handle doing those projects and not just getting money that eventually we give back. But I want to see us be able to try and recover as much as, as is offered to us from the state of California, rather than doing little tiny steps to get to where we need to be. If there's $9 million potentially that we can get into this county for infrastructure stuff or for projects like that, then I, I'd like to see that being offered to us when it comes back, that it's not just looking at 3 million or only 2 million out of the 6 million. I want to see us looking at the full amount.
Is there any further public comment on this item? Okay, see no movement. I think the board has given clear direction and you'll be meeting with staff and then you'll come back to us. With that, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll come back to our 6.5 item, our 10:15 a.m. item.
So.
Our 6.5 item, our 10:15 a.m. item, discussion and consideration of transient occupancy tax waivers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last month, your board asked staff to return with an overview of transient occupancy tax waivers. And I'm pleased to introduce Patrick Sullivan, our tax administrator, who's going to present that to you.
Good morning, board. I can provide some quick background on this item and then give you some updated figures from recent payments and registrations that we have going on with the program. So this item came forward following the enforcement efforts to identify the unregistered short-term rentals in the county. Approximately 126 operators have been identified so far. Your board authorized a waiver of interest and penalties for those first-time operators. When staff looked at the enforcement program, we did try to come up with a way to moderate the approach. And that's how we ultimately created the three-year policy guideline that we were looking back within the three years. In the ordinance, there was a three-year, three-year record-keeping requirement. And it was also three years that the primary enforcement tools were available to the tax collector's office. I can run through some figures. I have preliminary data on what's out there and it might help enlighten your conversation. Of those 126 unregistered operators, about 85% of them represent an entire home, like a whole home rental, a separate unit. 15% of them are a smaller portion of a home, maybe a bedroom or a small unit within that home, but not an entire vacation home itself. 65 operators so far that we've contacted have registered. About 54 have started paying, whether it's a partial payment, payment plan, or paying their whole back tax that's owed. As of yesterday, I spoke with staff in the tax collector's office to get some updated figures, $82,361 has been collected so far from this batch. From what we can tell, there's about 20,000 upstairs that's unprocessed in checks. Returns are due this month, so literally there's mail coming in each day. The average amount would be about $1,200 for each of these operators. The nightly rental rate goes from anywhere from $20 to a room, up to several hundred dollars for, you know, a larger vacation rental on the lake. So in terms of the revenue that we've seen for these properties, the range within this period can go from 2,000 a year to up over 100,000 to about 110,000 in revenue. Or actually, I'm sorry, that's over this three-year period. The other thing of note, I just wanted to provide some comparison to the group that is currently registered with the county and has been paying. There were about 39 active short-term rentals that I was able to identify that have been registered with the county and paying taxes. Most of them were on Airbnb or other similar platforms. Some of them had their own website. And they paid a toll of about 45,000 last year. So, and with an average of about $1,150. So that just may offer some perspective on the two different groups and what's out there. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Supervisor Brown?
So, the question that I had, out of the, the last discussion, out of the appeal that we had, was not so much, you know, how much are we collecting overall, but how much, how many of those operators hadn't collected anything but are required to pay, pay what they would have collected? That was what I was kind of interested in. I don't know if you have those figures available or not.
So, all of the operators that, all of the operators that were unregistered under the current, under the way the ordinance is structured would have been required to pay? Is that what you're?
No, no, I'm looking at the ones who didn't collect but are still required to pay something that they didn't collect.
Yeah. So I think that, that is a complicated question, partially because some people have built it into their rate. So for instance, the people that are already registered with the county and paying, most of them appear to have built the tax into their rate. And the same can be said for the unregistered people. But what's hard to know is that the, with a flat rate, we don't know whether they knew about the tax and built it in, or whether they didn't know about it and didn't build it in.
So there's, there's no way to know.
No. There are people I've spoken with that used other platforms that thought the tax was being collected because it showed up as a line item on their bill that they would receive. But it wasn't actually being forwarded to the county. The platform sent it to them and then they were supposed to send it to us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Any questions or comments from the public? So I know this was a, let me look at the item. I was not here when this item was discussed. My son was being sworn into the Navy that day. So it was, we're supposed to be giving possible direction to staff on whether we wish to continue collecting this tax. Is, that's, I mean, that's really where the discussion went. And we wanted to know exactly how much money's coming into the county and.
If there's any change in the direction you've given to us previously, as you know, you adopted the resolution that's in your agenda pack of giving staff the authority to settle appeals in a, in a prescribed manner. We've had a lot of successes with that. And so shall we stay the course or?
My, I say yes, stay the course.
I, I agree. I think we, we need to be continuing to move forward on this process.
I don't know that we have any options other than just take each appeal up. It came out of the, out of the, the suggestion that if we give one back, then we should give them all back. And I said, yeah, I'm good with that. And I'm still willing to consider that. So if we have more appeals, I'm happy to take them up. I don't know that I have so much support on the board for that, but I, I do think that people have the right to appeal. And the fact that they do have that right to appeal also gives us the right to consider discretion as opposed to rubber stamp everything. So I think that, you know, we'll have to stay the course and just take them up appeal by appeal as they come.
Okay. Is there anything further from the board? So I think you have.
Stay the course.
Stay the course, if you have direction.
Thank you.
There was, yeah, anyway, I'm not going to belabor it any longer. It's, that's what it is.
Our 6.6 item, our 10:30 a.m. item, continued from September 24th, 2019, and August 27th, 2019, appeal hearing, transient occupancy tax, D O T, Joan Cicato. So anybody wishing to, if actually come up and join us up here, yeah, come sit with us. And then we'll have the swear-in. Anybody?
Yeah, and could I ask Anita a quick procedural question? This is a repeat. Should we just start over as if this, this is a new appeal?
It's, that was, okay, that's not what the intention was.
I've actually went back and watched the video of the day that I wasn't here.
If the board is comfortable with this recollection of proceedings and the appellant has no desire to begin anew, then you can start from here. has no desire to begin anew, then you can start from here. I would re-swear witnesses just because it's been some time.
And it might be new ones.
Right.
So, anybody wishing to give any public input on this item will need to stand and raise their right hand.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give before this court will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help be God?
I do.
I do.
Supervisor Brown?
So, it's my recollection, where we left off, we had a vote, and it was 2 to 2. So, that's why, so unless there's anything further, I'm ready to make a motion.
And there was, nobody raised their hand for public input, so can we...
Do you wish to inquire if the appellant or if Patrick has anything that they wanted to comment upon since they were sworn in? They should have an opportunity.
Put you in.
Certainly, the appellant should have an opportunity to revisit the basis of her plea if she wishes to.
Well, as I, I sent an email to everybody sitting here last night. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but it was just basically recapping my request and the fact that had I been aware and had I been collecting these taxes, I certainly would have paid them to the county. And I didn't. I didn't do my due diligence. I admitted that. But I believe that the benefit of the taxes for the greater good of the whole, that holding me accountable for taxes that should have been coming from guests coming from out of the county, I think is kind of harsh and punitive, and it is a personal financial burden to be able to do that. I appreciated Rob reminding us that the appeal process is here to make exceptions and that I may not be on the same level as some of these other operators that are bringing in quite a bit of money. I had no idea that it was that lucrative of a thing, and that those exceptions can be made. So, I think that's all I have to say because I think we've looked at this all before, so...
Patrick?
I don't really have anything in particular to add. Most of the points that I raised in the last discussion would be applicable here, just that general background, that there are the different classes of rentals and different revenue streams, but other than that, same as before.
Supervisor Brown?
I make a motion to grant the appeal.
Motion dies lack of a second.
Make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, is your board going to direct in that the minute, there be a minute order reflecting that this appeal was heard and denied that will be then available to the appellant?
Yes. Doesn't look like it. Our 6.7 item, our 11 a.m. item, which we're almost on time here, discussion and debriefing on recent PG&E public safety power shut-offs, PSPS event that we had last week and maybe...
Madam Chair, I think the sheriff and any of his staff, he wishes to have come up...
Come up and join us.
Join me.
So, I asked for this agenda item because there's honestly quite a lot to talk about following the PSPS event that we had that began October 9. Of course, in scheduling that, we weren't anticipating that we would be on the verge of another one, and the information we all have is that there may be yet another one a few days out after this one. And so, there's been a considerable amount of county time put into this, managing these events and county expense, and beyond that, it's, at the very least, been a really unpleasant inconvenience for Lake County citizens. And it was particularly perplexing during the October 9 event that went on for a few days because most of us didn't experience wind. So, there were various frustrations throughout the process in terms of communications, and certainly PG&E has owned that. I was hoping the sheriff would share some of his experience. I'm sure your board is also aware that we have considerable public input. We gave copies of the input sent to us at the Vision website, and there's been a few more that have come in this morning that Carolyn Purdy forwarded to your board. So, the public certainly has a lot to say, and there may be more that you're going to hear in person. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the sheriff to kind of talk about the EOC part of the experience, and then at some point, I'd like to add to you what we think this cost us in terms of lost productivity and expense.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Yeah, so when we scheduled this, I don't think we had anticipated being in the verge of another weather event, and as we hope for this weather event, I'm going to try to be, to not be long-winded, so...
You may shut off the lights if you do so.
I'm working on my second career. So, talking about the last public safety power shut-off, it was, I would describe it as somewhat of a fiasco on PG&E's part. I will tell you that there were some areas of improvement from last year's event that we had, but we did spend quite a bit of time, and I know the county administrator's going to talk about the, an estimate of the number of hours that we've tracked, but some of the things that we spent time working on since October of last year, after being notified of a public safety power shut-off, are holding numerous meetings with our stakeholders, both in the county, with community groups, with non-governmental organizations, with our EOC working groups. We hadn't tracked those to see exactly what the impact are, so the estimates that we put in are just going to be just that, they're going to be estimates. We spent quite a bit of time doing social media messaging well in advance of the public safety power shut-off to let people know that these were going to be a very likely, good likelihood of occurring in our communities, and to get the message out that the county and our local governments don't have the capacity to care for an entire county worth of people in the event that a power shut-off could happen. So, our messaging was really geared towards getting people to be prepared and get ready to take care of themselves. If people's plan was to wait for the power to go out and then expect the county to come in and take care of them, we just simply don't have the capacity for that. So, it would be quite an unpleasant event for you if you were in that group. So, we're going to continue pushing that messaging to take individual responsibility for your own preparedness, whether it's your family, whether it's yourself as an individual, whether it's your business or your organization. And we have, as a county, have been doing that. Several businesses have been doing that, and I think a good section of our population has been doing that. So, there are still some people out there that I think waited until the last moment thinking that this wasn't going to happen. As we've seen, it is a reality, and we experienced several challenges with this most recent event. Probably the overriding challenge that we faced was the fact that it encompassed our entire county. I think it was all of our customers during the last public safety power shut-off that were impacted. The messaging that came out was, as indicated by PG&E, we did receive advanced notification. It was subject to change, and it did change all the way up until the day before the event. So, that was a little bit frustrating, but again, that messaging is sometimes predicated on what the weather does, and that's not 100% predictable. The website that PG&E had up, I think there was a problem, I hope there was some embarrassment on PG&E's website about the adequacy of their website. It shut down during this event. The information that they were putting out was to tell us, to tell the customers to go to PG&E for information, go to the website, and their website crashed at some point during the event. They've since then bolstered the capacity of their website. There have been a couple of issues, but it seems to be working much better than it has. There were indications that there was some sort of shutdown on the website this morning. I believe, last I checked, that that has been taken care of, so it's back up. We had some issues with prioritization of the response for re-energization of power in the county. During the conference calls that we had, we were notified that PG&E was dedicating what seemed to be an inordinately large amount of resources to certain counties which were impacted much less than Lake County and not sending resources here that we thought were satisfactory. So, we voiced our opinion on that. In response, PG&E is committed to send an actual representative up here during this next expected power shut-off. So, we'll have somebody on scene in person tending to our needs. The impact of this one that's coming up is expected to be much less than the previous event, but it will still have an impact on a couple thousand members of our community. Some of the positives, as I said earlier, were the advanced notification and warning. This didn't come as a last minute. If you count the notifications that have been going on over the last several months, everybody in the county should have been made aware that this was going to happen and had adequate time to prepare. I think the event itself really put an exclamation point on the fact that personal preparedness is essential. You're going to have to be ready, this is going to happen. We saw some very long lines at our gas stations. We saw, I had anecdotal reports of some minor acts of violence in grocery stores. I don't think anything that rose to the level of crime, but certainly, there was some accelerated rudeness that was occurring in our communities as people tried to respond. As far as responses for criminal activity, and I can't speak for the fire services, but I can relay the information they provided, we didn't see a huge spike in crimes related to the power shut-off, which is good, and I hope we continue to see that trend. And the calls for medical services increased, but not extremely drastically from what I hear. We did have an increase in a number of alarm calls as the power cycles on and off. Sometimes that triggers alarms, so we did see a spike in alarm calls around the time that the power was turned on and turned off. Another positive that we saw, PG&E has been receptive to feedback. They do try to improve on these things. Sometimes it's not as good as we would like. I think the only thing that will make everybody happy is for PG&E to say, we fixed all our infrastructure, there's no longer a need for public safety power shut-offs, but that's certainly not going to be any reality that we're going to see in the next few years and up to 10 years if their executive is correct. Another improvement that we saw from last year's power shut-offs was the availability of maps. The maps were first made available to our EOCs through a portal, and PG&E quickly realized that there was a lot of demand amongst the public for these maps, so they've made those maps available and they continue to update them on a daily basis and sometimes several times daily. So, the public-facing maps are a true benefit, and the ability to put your address into PG&E's website to see if your individual address is going to be affected by a public safety shut-off has taken some of the load off of our staff for answering those types of questions that, quite frankly, we don't have the ability to, and not our job to answer those. This is a PG&E-driven event, so I really want to make sure that PG&E is shouldering the burden of responsibility when it comes to messaging and response for these types of things. With that, I'll...
So, just to give you some preliminary figures on what we think it cost us in terms of county time and dollars, we don't have a complete response from all departments. Probably three-quarters of our departments responding indicated the time spent preparing for the PSPS totaled about 2,100 hours. The time spent managing the PSPS, about 6,600 hours. All costs, all total, were estimating over $200,000 in lost productivity and time that will never be reimbursed. And that's apart from the generator purchase that occurred. I mean, that's, some of that is planning for the installation and coordinating all of that, but not the actual purchase of the generators. The generators are what county services afloat, so thank you for the wisdom to let us secure those, but it was really something.
Anything? Questions or comments from the board before I open up to the public? We want to hear the public. Supervisor Sabatier. Oh, hold on.
So, I just want to make one statement, and I know that Sheriff Martin, you were on vacation at this time, and you would have probably done the same, but I want to make sure and commend undersheriff Chris Macedo for his words and his actions towards PG&E that this is not enough. This is not adequate what you're doing for us. That was very, I was very happy to hear that voice for Lake County on the phone conference. At that point, every county around us had between 20 and 30% re-energization. We were at zero, and they claimed it was because people had not reported back yet. For other counties, I'm sure they were maybe already at 40 or 50% and had not yet reported back, but we were still at zero, and we knew that nothing had been re-energized, including our critical infrastructure. So, wanted to make that comment because I truly appreciated having that voice. But on the critical infrastructure, I just want to make sure and check in with Sheriff Martin. The Adventist Hospital is also on the list for critical infrastructure because oftentimes I would see jail and Sutter Hospital, but I would never see Adventist Health on the messaging that I received, and maybe it was just a short message, and so it didn't include Adventist Health, but they are on the list, so I just wanted to make sure and check in.
You'd have to confirm that with PG&E. They maintain the critical infrastructure list.
Okay.
So, we...
So, reach out to Allison.
We certainly submit that as one of ours, but the lists that, as they compose, sometimes don't accurately reflect the information that we provide them. It's their list.
Okay.
Anything further from the board before I open it to public? Supervisor Simon?
I just want to thank, obviously, the sheriff's office, EOC, Dale, everybody being on the phone, and obviously Sheriff Macedo also said that at the disaster council, speaking up over the phone, I really appreciated that. But also, with admin and all of our department heads of tracking their time and information, I think that's going to be critical, getting that information to Calloway us when they talk about this isn't a disaster, and somewhat it is. It's a local disaster for our government as we're recovering still from all of the disasters we've had, and also, we're going to hear from the public. I know that myself, and I had imagined all the other supervisors here at the board have been called by business owners who have lost multiple thousands of dollars in product and other stuff that have gone on, not able to operate. So, I think gathering the information and taking it to the Capitol in Calloway us is going to be very important down the road where we can really put that in front of them. And just like each and every one of us, the debacle that happened on the phone calls with PG&E, we had access to be able to call in and listen. We go through the sheriff's office. You speak for us as a county on those things, and at one point, we got cut off, and that was absolutely unacceptable. I know myself, I called Senator McGuire, I called the governor's office. Unacceptable for the local elected officials, even though it was available to happen at the EOC, for us not to be able to listen and know what's going on in our community, that's, it was unacceptable. So, appreciate what you did, but we also, as elected officials, need to make sure we're taking this all the way to the state Capitol and letting them know how disappointed we are of how they've treated our people here. And as those elected officials, we don't need to say anything, but we need to hear every conversation that's happening so that we can, you know, really protect our community and do those things. So, I want to commend everybody just on putting that stuff on paper and allowing us to be able to have that information as we take it up the chain here to let them know how unacceptable this is right now. But that's all I've got to say.
So, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If you could state your name, and then you have three minutes.
I'm Joan Moss. I'm a senior citizen, and I want to commend Sheriff Martin for his original meeting. He called a meeting of all the county employees, and he really tried to take care of us and tell us what to do. I happened to be able to be at that meeting. I remembered what he had said, and I believe that he did a great job of trying to prepare everyone. And I hope he won't think this is an insult, but I believe that he becomes like a mother hen.
Mother hen.
The day of the shut-off, I approached Cobb Mountain. It was the one place, there was Cobb Hardesters, was open. Mountain High was getting a generator functioning. The gas station was functioning. It was selling gas, and the business people on their way to work were very patient. The Cobb Station would take cash, and Cobb Hardesters would take a Visa card, so you could get money from your Visa card and then buy gas. And of course, Mountain High ended up running, and all the people who love coffee houses, who don't like sitting in the dark alone, were all there. And it was just really, you got to see Lake County at its best when you see the people of Cobb Mountain pull together and take care of each other. The people at Kits were very kind the day before, and a gentleman did carry a two-gallon container of water to my car, and the one of the people who runs Kits Gas. So, I think that basically, everybody pulled together, and we all survived. The best thing was on Thursday, Lake County courthouse was open, and many people were charging their cellphones. I was able to use the supervisor's chambers to charge my cellphone, and there were people everywhere at the outlets charging their cellphones who were out of charge. That was wonderful. And there is a great feeling of community at the senior center in Lakeport. Everybody met, and they were running, and they had a great senior lunch. Everybody was there who didn't want to stay home. I'm one of the people who don't like to stay home, so I just wanted to report in a positive light. Now, if Sheriff Martin, Sheriff Martin could just speak a little slower, it would be hard for, it would be easier for us to understand him sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
And thank you, Sheriff Martin.
Slow down, mother hen.
Slow down, mother hen.
My name is... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Gwyneth Jones. I live alone on rural residential property in Lake County. I heeded the announcement given prior to the PSPS of October 9th and prepared as best I wanted to. My average PG&E bill is $50 a month. I was minimally affected by PSPS. Food in the freezer was okay, ate the perishables from the fridge. My issue involves my non-conventional septic system, which requires an electric pump to move affluent to the leach field uphill. I'm not the only one in the county with a non-conventional septic system. I have a well, but drink bottled water, and my garden was already done for the year, so water use from the well was minimally affected. I used my wood stove for heat as the nights were chilly. I will never get rid of my wood stove. The communication during and after the PSPS was unacceptable. The local commercial radio stations had no updates from PG&E or state government. I turned to trustee KPFZ for current information, but even they let me down, citing nixels, which I never received, as mere speculation as to when the all-clear was given and when power would be restored. The state and county government representatives did not update us either. That may be due to PG&E's non-communication. I do not have a smartphone, just a 3G flip phone and a battery radio. Once the battery backup for my modem failed, my iPad was useless. Prior to the power shut-off, I received alerts based on my ZIP code on my landline and flip phone, but not one word after that. PG&E needs to be more specific in announcing when the PSPS will occur, a timeframe. If you do not have a digital account with PG&E, you have no access to their website. I do not have one, and I do not want one. I am not the only person like this in Lake County. My elderly neighbors are not digitally connected. Perhaps the most galling was PG&E's weather forecast. There were no Diablo winds in Lakeport. And this is an aside to PG&E. Get your marketing department to come up with a better name that doesn't play on people's fears. KCRA did not forecast high winds for Lakeport. I want to know where the 100 incidences of PG&E's de-energized lines not causing fires occurred. PG&E refuses or is unable to inform us, their customers. PG&E, despite all their protestations, has no obligation to the customers and ratepayers. PG&E is a publicly traded corporation. Their only obligation is to their shareholders to maximize profit and exit bankruptcy. It's time to re-regulate the electric utilities. Deregulation brought us Enron and now PSPS.
Thank you, Gwyneth.
Good morning. My name is Carol Collewis. I am a resident of Upper Lake, and I'm an independent solar consultant. First of all, thank you, Sheriff Martin. You did a fabulous job, and I was glued to your Facebook page, and I still am glued to your Facebook Lives. Thank you. Secondly, I want to make a comment about, it's one thing about understanding what's going wrong with PG&E and to be angry and to tell them how angry we are, but they are a corporation, and the amount of time that corporations are actually going to, let's put it this way, they are beholden to their shareholders. That's what corporations are, and they are required by law to be beholden to their shareholders. So there is a group of us that are looking to take control back. There is a way that we can do this, and that is through forming an electricity cooperative, where the residents and the people that get electricity are actually member owners. In the co-op, there are over 900 electricity cooperatives in the United States that are all functioning very well, and the previous speaker mentioning the fact that corporations don't have any obligation to us or we have no ability to control ourselves. The electricity cooperative will give us transparency, it will give us control, it will give us ownership as people over our own assets and assets. And especially for lower-income people and for people that are extremely affected, we can take care of our own. So why should we depend on a big outside corporation? And let's do a Buckminster Fuller on this, where we actually set up a system parallel to the old one, which makes the old one obsolete. So there's a group of us working on this, and we're starting to generate public support for this, so if anybody is interested in knowing more and being on our mailing list, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. So, thank you.
Why don't you give your information out so they can get ahold of you?
Certainly. My name is, you can contact me at Carol, C-A-R-O-L, at upstartenergy.com. That's Carol, C-A-R-O-L, at upstartenergy.com. Let's take our power back, literally and figuratively.
May I interrupt public input momentarily for this important announcement? Thank you, I appreciate, Carol, I appreciate the gratitude. I'm up here. Hi. I'll tell you, this isn't the Brian Show. This is leadership from the Board of Supervisors, county admin, every department head we have here, all of my staff. So I may be the one that you see up there, but I'm going to tell you, there are, as the county administrator said, people putting in thousands of hours of work on this to get this going. So it is a collective effort, and so when the gratitude comes, my sentiments are that it goes out to everybody in the county that's been prepared. Those of us that were able to sit down on these conference calls saw that Lake County was probably, I'll say, we were, if not the best, one of the best-prepared counties for this to occur. So that goes to the hard work of the staff involved all throughout the county. Thank you.
My name is Gregory Scott. I'm a resident of Scotts Valley Road, and I look back over the years of 2015 to 2018, we had drought years. This last winter, we had more than average rainfall, resulting in higher relative humidities and higher fuel moistures, and all the fires would burn in Northern California. This year, if not burned into the next burn period, meaning it started that day, and the next day, it was pretty well-controlled. There's a change there in understanding fire behavior. Now, I've did that for 35 years. I ran major fires. I was the commander of the Oakland Hills Fire, and a lot of fires in Southern California. And where PG&E figures out how they're preventing fires by turning off the power and creating a disaster, that is a disaster, is beyond me. Now, back in the 70s and 80s, as a young lad, a fire captain, I inspected miles of PG&E lines, basically for transformers, fuses, which they don't use anymore, the clearances and around the lines and below, sighted them oftentimes, and over the 1970s, 80s, 90s, and they still have not met the need. Now, we have residents that clear around their properties willingly, fire safety, fire prevention. So it's time that we look about what our legislators are doing. Public Resources Code 4291 covers these clearances of flammable vegetation. Now, why isn't PG&E being held accountable to the letter of the law, not the intent, to the letter of the law to take care of business over the last 40 years? Now we're into the situation where it is a cruel act for the public, to the citizens, to the taxpayers, and to the voters. What are we doing about it? Now, what Moke said is exactly right. I called Senator McGuire's office yesterday and talked about 4291 extensively. I would hope that maybe, and this county has done an outstanding job of disaster management. I am so proud of what you've done. But maybe it's time that we talk to our brothers and sisters, counties and city councils and boards, and get a consensus amongst Northern California to speak the loudest word of service to your citizens, of going to the state and telling them to change it, hold PG&E accountable for those clearances, or if that law is not good enough, to reinforce the law, change it to where it's got some teeth, and let's knock this nonsense off. PG&E does not have the right to treat us cruelly. It fringes on treason to me, what they're doing to our people. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Greg. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Yolanda from the Oaks, and first of all, I want to say, God, I really like what I'm hearing here today. It's right on. And Mr. Simon, you know, when you go back down to Sacramento, please let us know. Maybe we can stand outside with picket signs to back you up, you know? But first of all, I can't speak of how this impacted me without talking about this PG&E-created disaster and how it impacted our community of Lake County. One of the poorest counties in California, I believe 20% poverty level. Thousands of us could not afford the purchase of a generator. Stores ran out of ice and water, and some gas stations, I hear, ran out of gas. We only had one resource center, open only for a limited amount of time. Children didn't go to school. Many parents didn't have options for childcare, and many people in grocery stores, gas station stores, small businesses, lost wages because stores were closed. You are our local leaderships, and we want our voices heard through you to PG&E. And so I have a message for you to take with you the next time you talk to those crazy people. PG&E states that this is the norm for the next 10 years. They say they would put transmission lines underground in strategic areas. Well, where are those strategic underground transmissions lines going to be in Lake County? PG&E also needs to sponsor resource centers 24 hours to provide warm food, restrooms, sleeping cots, cell and internet services, because winter is coming and temperatures are going to go below zero. Many folks here don't have fireplaces or can't afford a generator. PG&E needs to also subsidize purchase of generators for homeowners and financially aid those who cannot afford generators. They need to also subsidize small businesses so they don't shut down and we're left with a ghost town. If this is what PG&E says is going to be the norm to prevent fires and for our safety, then all things listed above are for public safety and are needed as well. It would be a tragedy that fires would start because people are lighting candles in their houses to see, because they can't afford to spend money to go out and buy those lights, flashlights, and batteries, and all those kinds of things to keep them going. We want more from PG&E than apologies. Because of their deferred maintenance, they are creating unsafe conditions for the public. We also want our voices heard through you with our state and federal leaders.
Yolanda, if you could just wrap it up?
Okay.
Thank you.
We need to create funding to help us and put pressure on PG&E to help pay for the disasters they created, and to begin our electric underground construction in Lake County. Okay, and also, you know, have you considered volunteer committees to be created, to be, you know, put out there during these shutouts or committees to have folks call around to some of these corporations and big stores to donate funding so that we can get the kinds of things we need for our communities? Just saying. And thank you very much for all of you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Vivian from the Oaks, Clear Lake Oaks, and I'm going to read my little paper. I cannot afford to buy a generator, and most of our community were without generators. The shutdown of the power of PG&E caused the following hardship: loss of food, no money in the budget for more food, smaller paychecks due to less days worked, businesses closed, losing money, limiting places to buy goods, bottled water and ice sold out. PG&E should have had a freezer truck to help give ice away. Only one center for all of Lake County? Not enough centers. Finding gasoline was limited as some gas stations were closed. Gas for generators and commuters is a must. More money spent on extra law enforcement, security, et cetera, higher taxes for us. Schools closed for days and parents having to stay home, causing loss of wages. The worst of it was lack of concern for the elderly and the medical needed that are staying at home. Hospitals were overwhelmed helping patients. I did not cause PG&E's lack of tower maintenance for decades of neglect, and I should not have to get used to a man-made disaster created by PG&E disrupting my life. PG is holding our community hostage. Summer may be a death sentence with temps reaching 90s, and the vulnerable who are unable to keep their homes cool turning into hot boxes. Could there be more deaths and accidental fires by the shut-off by PG&E than the actual tower fires? I hope not. So join the rest of our community, and do not turn on your generators, and you will find out firsthand what it's like to be shut off for days. Maybe you will do something to help PG&E from their shutting off our electricity. We need you all to insist that PG&E work on fixing their fire hazard problem instead of them putting the burden and responsibility on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
Hi, Jessica Pisco of the Cobb Area Council. So I have some updates just how the Cobb area fared. We had significant wind. It was really intense for a couple of the days, but the first 30 hours, we didn't have cell service or very, very little, less than one bar. So there was no way to communicate with anybody, and my husband and I have a software consulting business at our house, so he's not able to work because you couldn't get a personal hotspot. Three days of no school, and some of the power didn't come on in the Cobb area until Saturday morning. A lot of those people are on wells, so if they had a generator, they were probably using it on their house, so they didn't have water that entire time. I had to go to the gas station to refill my tanks for my generator, and I waited an hour and a half. The Mountain High Coffee Shop did try and open the first day, and then they just, they couldn't. So that is a business center for a lot of people. They go there for services, and they couldn't stay open. The Hardesters did stay open. And then there was a lot of vulnerable elderly. Personally, I had to open my freezer to let people keep their food so it wouldn't spoil at my house, and then I had them over for meals and coffee because they didn't have resources. And they have an all-electric house, they're elderly, they're seniors, and they're not in a position to run a generator. At our Cobb Resilient event, the different neighborhoods got together, and so I have some comments from them. If this is going to continue, one person suggests that they get help from PG&E with generators and transfer switches, which is over $3,000 cost, according to one person. The noise and the fumes throughout the neighborhoods is really intense. Someone suggested that the public be provided with battery-powered or solar rechargeable lights, and someone said that we were lucky that this was not a really cold time, although it was cool. So the people that had wood stoves could make a fire, but a lot of people were cold. One person was grateful for the shut-off because the wind was so intense. And the carbon monoxide was an issue yesterday at the Risk Reduction Authority. We heard there were quite a few calls where carbon monoxide was getting into homes from generators. And this is a very long comment from somebody that has a lot of missed rental income because their renters couldn't go to work and they work part-time, and they had to pay childcare. So that landlord is basically going to be covering three different tenants this whole month for rent. I think that's it.
Thank you, Jessica.
Dan Camacho, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Lakeport Unified School District. I wasn't going to talk, but quite a few people have talked about schools, and just real quick, you know, the three days, our 1,450 students, we get paid based on ADA, average daily attendance. 1,450 students, three days equals, comes out to about $180,000. We will make up those three days eventually. Usually, they get put in, like we're... Usually, they get put in, like, we're off the week of Thanksgiving, so two of them might become the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Most kids already have plans to go to Grandma and Grandpa's house, or teachers already have plans. So at that point, we're losing attendance, losing money, bringing in substitute teachers that costs money. So, you know, there's, there's definitely a cost there to the school district. A lot of little things, you know, I'm not complaining, but a lot of little things. We had fire alarms going off. We had burglar alarms going off. The fire department, I think, was at our school twice, due to false alarms, because our backup batteries would go bad and trigger the fire alarm. Real simple things, like having to change a football game. You know, it costs the sports program money at the gate, because we had changes today. It costs boosters money at the snack shack. So all in all, just, you know, on the school side, it really is a huge issue as far as kids go, and I'm sure all the school districts. I don't, you know, I don't know of any that have backup generators that power the whole school district. And, yeah, you know, we're, something we're looking into now, definitely. But in a school district that had to lay off two teachers, a counselor, and a crossing guard, that Ms. Tina Scott is our new crossing guard, you know, it's hard to come up with money to, to power a whole school district, to figure out a way to do that. But I just wanted to come up and give you a quick rundown on the school side and the effect it had on our school. So, thank you.
So do we know when the school's going to be maybe thinking about putting those extra days in there?
Well, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to quote anything, but, you know, yeah, usually, it's going to be, you know, something that was scheduled as a vacation day, rather than adding it on to the end of the year, would be my guess.
And did the school have generation to be able to keep their food that they had there?
No, we lost the food in the fridge at the cafeteria, which, which wasn't much, because we were halfway prepared, so they kind of canceled the Cisco order. The issue became Friday, when we were going to reopen, and we thought we would have power in the morning. In order to reopen, you have to have food for the kids, meals, and that includes milk. So we had Costco in Ukiah hold, I forget what it was, 500 gallons or 50, I don't, I think it was 500 gallons of milk over there, ready to go for us to go pick up that morning, but we didn't get power until, I believe it was 7:15, and 6 o'clock was call time, so we never had to go get that. But, yeah, you know, food could have been a huge issue, but we were kind of prepared for that. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
And that's just one school district.
That's one school district. Oh, by the way, thank you, Brian Martin.
Hi, my name's Pollyann, and we've heard all these stories that are so sad, and we all feel bad. My bottom line is, we cannot call this the new normal. I'm so tired of hearing that this is the new normal. It has to change. You folks are our voice, so at this point, we've heard all the problems. What is the board's plan of action? Step one, step two, step three, step four? Thank you.
Thank you, Pollyann.
I'm Jan Coppinger, Special District Administrator, and I didn't hear anybody from AT&amp;T here or T-Mobile. I was wondering, can we get service providers that had told us before the shutdown, service would be ongoing, and then it failed us to the table? Because if this is the new normal, and they're telling us your cell phones will work, and then they don't, your alarm systems will work, and then they don't, and all these, that's something we, we need to fix, because I think AT&amp;T needs to get more prepared. Our lift station alarms run off AT&amp;T, and we were told that it would all be intact, but it was not. It failed, and it continued to fail a week after the power was back on. And T-Mobile was down the entire time. A lot of cellphone coverage, and I think communication is critical at that time. We are in our highest fire season, and, you know, when you're cut off from everything. So can we get a meeting of AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, get all the service providers together and say, how are you going to prepare for this, so that if this happens again, and it's county-wide, we can survive it without disasters like sewer spills? And, you know, if a fire broke out and someone's phone didn't work, how are they going to notify anybody? So it's going to turn into a wildfire, not just a house fire, but...
Yeah, I agree. Any further public comment?
On that last note, I'd like to thank MediaCom for keeping our internet up and running at the sheriff's office, at least. That would enable us to continue business as usual. So while some of the utility providers were inadequately prepared, I think MediaCom, while they probably weren't able to restore internet and phone and TV service countywide, they were able to keep the critical infrastructure in the county up and running.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the schools, and hopefully this can be heard or passed on. But I know that from a conversation I had at the OES, there was a gentleman from Lake County Office of Ed, I'll leave the name out for now, who said that inclement days have been disappearing off the schools' calendars, which means they have to go back into a union negotiation to change the calendar, which makes it that much more difficult. And we need to put inclement days back on the calendar. Our kids cannot afford to not be, go through the level of education they should be going through, to be competitive in the world that we're going to release them to. So I think that's something that we need to change. And I'll say more later.
Anything further from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll keep going. So I'm, I'm going to say that I have mixed emotions. We've all been through the emotions of a fire. And at the point where the fire is somewhat contained and we can start rebuilding, we were so happy with PG&E at that point, with their little military coming through and, and bringing us back up. I remember the Valley Fire, they were set up right between Hidden Valley and Middletown. It was an amazing scene to see them working and to get everything back up, and how quickly they rewired and put posts back up. Same deal with, when I went through the sulfur fire personally. And so there, there's some positives and some negatives of how it is that they work, and especially also in the re-energization. I thought that their workers did a good job of actually getting us re-energized. Maybe there was some help from the sheriff's office that motivated them to work a little harder that day. But unfortunately, it's, it's the situation we have right now. And in a sense, I have to figure out how to find the silver lining in the situation that we're, we're put in front of us. I feel that we are, and it's a pipe dream, and I know that some of the realists here are going to tell me to calm down, but I feel like we are living in a 1950s world, where we still have wires connecting our houses, where we still have wires connecting states. We have all the technology in the world. We have a lot of grant possibilities. We have a lot of sun that hits us all the time right here. The number-one permit that's happening in the city of Clear Lake, and I'm sure it's similar for the county, is solar panels. It's no longer enough. It's actually so ridiculous what's going on. I just went to the RCRC conference. PG&E is paying Arizona to take their electricity, because we're generating too much electricity due to our solar panels being connected directly to PG&E. That is the stupidest thing I've ever heard in my life. It does not make any sense that our rates go up while we generate more than we need, and they're paying someone else to take it, instead of giving it to us in return. But the fact is, we don't have the battery storage. So to me, it, and, and I'm looking at Carol, she brought it up, and it's exactly what we should be working on, is how do we generate energy ourselves? How do we capture and hold energy ourselves? How do we do, how do we help individuals do that at their homes? How do we help businesses do that at their businesses? And how do we do that in communities? If we're, we talked about subdivisions earlier. If we're going to be building subdivisions, we're talking about green space. You need battery storage and solar panels on your new subdivisions. It should be a part of every new plan for every new house. I talked to Senator McGuire. You have a law that says in 2020, you must have solar panels. You need to amend that to say you also have to have battery storage along with the solar panels, or you're only adding to the problem where there's too much energy and not enough that we can actually capture. I think we need to look forward in the future, and my vision of the future is no more wires, no more danger. We have the technology to do this, and we have the capability to do it. And I think we need to make those steps happen. I know in April, there's a grant opportunity that's opening up. I think it's $350 million, and it's all about battery storage. And so I've already invited a gentleman that I met, again, at RCRC. His name is Michael Day. He's working on an awesome project in District One for energy creation, and also for fire suppression, which is amazing that we do both at the same time. But I'm having him come down to talk to the city of Lakeport, the city of Clear Lake, as well as some of our county staff. What is the big idea outside of the box that we can do and that we can bring? We have money that's going to be available, money that's already available. We got to stop using our old technology, which is only endangering us as we deal with either the outcomes of the drought, or the outcomes of climate change, whatever it is that's happening, that's, or the outcomes of lack of maintenance of, of our wildlands, whatever is happening, it's affecting us, and we have to take some control and some change. And we need to make that happen. And I think we have to look at what, what is the silver lining? And the silver lining is, there's discomfort now, but we're going to make this huge change, where eventually, I just see PG&E gone. They're useless. They're a middleman to energy we can already have. So that, that's, that's what I would like to see us focus on. We've had talks about, I know that Rob Brown, Supervisor Brown, brought up the idea of talking about energy as a whole. He didn't want to have a, a, a conversation about how is it going to be good for the environment? No, how are we going to be self-sufficient? And then we talked about the generators. I want our conversation to grow to a larger concept of how can we make our communities, not just us, as a courthouse, or as specific agency facilities? How do we make our communities self-sustainable, so we don't have to be under the thumb of another agency? I know that there's others, like Sacramento and Ukiah, they have their own municipal utility districts. I don't believe in that. It still requires the wires that are a danger. I don't want to take on that liability. I don't think we have the capability to deal with that kind of liability, because now we're the ones who have to maintain and cut the trees and do everything else. Let's get rid of what the danger is, and let's plan ahead to get to where we should be. That's, that's, that's what I think we should focus on. And I think it's available to us. And I hope to bring you back some great information after my meeting with Michael Day, because I think he has the ideas and the innovation to make those things happen, just like he's doing in District One.
Carol.
So, Madam Chair, I'm sure your board saw the press release?
Oh, saw the press release. Michael McGuire, our senator, issued last week, following a CPUC emergency meeting to hear responses about, from PG&E leadership on the PSPs. He blasted them pretty hard. What I might suggest for your next agenda is that staff prepare a letter from your board conveying the essence of the messaging you're hearing today, and, and prepare that for the CPUC, so that we go on record with how unacceptable this whole thing is. You might want to consider even having one of your board members hand carry it to CPUC to make impact at some appropriate juncture. But, you know, you were asked the question, what next? That would be my recommendation at this point.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Senator McGuire on Sunday. As a matter of fact, we were together with him. And he was definitely interested in hearing what, what came out of this meeting today. We told him that we had put this on for the community to come out, to talk about what's going on. And at that time, we were talking about the second event that will be happening this week in South County. I got the map today, 1,800, I think all of them are in my district. They're going to be affected for two days with a potential power shut-off. So I think, long-term wise, Bruno, right on with the alternative energies, whether it is a co-op or other things. I know we have had discussions before. I know Lars is looking at long-term solar and other projects. I don't know if you want to come up and talk about long-term, you know, solutions. If not, that's fine. But I know what this has done for the board, at least myself, has really kicked it into high gear to see where we're going here in the future to protect our community, the county. I think I want to commend the board for getting the generators up, so this facility and others could be operating during the time it was down. I know Lars did a great job of getting one of the facilities, as it was closed, fired up. It was an opportunity to get a generator set in. So from the community standpoint, I knew you were asking Plan One and Two. Number one is to let them know how disappointed we are, and to gather the information, put it in front of them, and have our legislators take that message for us, to help us any way that they can. And that's, you know, I think, the first step here, and I know that everybody on the board, the sheriff's office, you'll see, all of our department heads are gathering that information, so we not only have just us saying, hey, this was wrong, but here's the actual cost that it caused, you know, that, that it incurred here in our county. And I think that's a huge information tool that they're going to use moving forward. So appreciate all the conversations, but it is definitely a new reality that I do not like. Microgrid systems, all those types of things, we need to be looking at. And also, the infrastructure, like you said, improvements from PG&E. We need to continue those conversations of getting larger wire on the poles, if they're not going to put them underground. We need to just look at those different systems, how we're doing it. I think South County, we're affected right now with one transmission line that's coming over St. Helena. We need to make sure from the state level, that state parks and other things are obviously working in coordination with PG&E, so we get the clearing that we need in those areas. And those are all issues that we'll address, I think, long-term. But, yeah, the next decade, this is unacceptable. We may lose businesses after this second shutout right in South County, you know, in the conversations I'm having with the business owners, which is very disappointing, because some of those are mainstays that have been there for years, that aren't able to survive in instances like this. And it's, it's disappointing, but it also encourages, you know, inspires me, and I think the rest of the board, to really come up with different solutions throughout the future. Lars, go ahead.
Lars, you're in Public Services Director. Simply to, to touch on, on what Supervisor Simon mentioned, which is solar panels. We are talking specifically solar, solar panels for county facilities. Bigger picture on, you know, going to a cooperative, that's a, you know, that's entirely a different discussion. But we are just on the precipice of an RFP going out for a design build for about a dozen facilities, within the, within county facilities, for solar panels. But I, I think it's important that we, that we touch not just on solar, but on energy efficiency. There are a lot of other opportunities that are there to work on the building envelope. Solar's great, you know, getting away from, from the reliance on PG&E, but it's also reducing how much energy we actually need. So, so that is, that is forthcoming. We do have a lot of data on, that Carol talked about, the, the number of hours that county staff worked. The generators themselves, simply just to add to the conversation, the fuel, the fuel usage was about $10,000. That's miniscule when you talk about the, about 600, over $600,000 of generator costs that we have, some of which are simply not installed yet, because they're actually being delivered this week for three of our facilities. Also, fuel costs are one thing, but it's also more expensive to operate, as you can imagine, a generator than it is to have the, the power that is, that we have in place through PG&E. So not only is it, is it expensive to get the generator, there's the, the fuel costs themselves, whether it's diesel, gasoline, propane, whatever you might have. So, so we did have, you know, over $600,000 of install costs, about $10,000 of fuel costs. And, and I just want to highlight that the hours that Carol mentioned, facilities maintenance staff alone is, is 545 hours, with a, a crew of about six to eight guys. I say six to eight, because two of those guys are, are extra help. So you can imagine that that's just about full-time for, for that, not just during the event, but the, all the, the work leading up to the event, which was the bulk of their hours, 450 hours, leading up to the, to the power shutdown. Now, during the event, almost 100 hours. So on a, on a very small staff, that is a, a huge impact. So we can look at it from a county perspective, which is a, is a large impact, but on a microcosm of the facilities maintenance staff, I mean, just about everything else shuts down. And then you have a buildup of already deferred maintenance that simply gets deferred even further. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Supervisor Randall?
I just wanted to highlight on something of what I'm grateful for, especially with this county. I know it's not the Brian Show, but I wanted to just emphasize the fact that when he does tune into Facebook, people are like, you can see all the views, you can see everybody on it. I had the privilege of being in the Contra Costa County during the Crockett explosion, and there's not that level of intimacy there. We, we were prepared here. Of course, we experienced a lot of emergencies, you know, of course, but prepared, we're attainable. Bruno and I were out, I think, Thursday, the, the day that we were still shut down, still conducting business. I'm sure everyone else here was. And so I'm just grateful for that, and I'm sure that there's a lot of folks that are as well, and especially in getting the, the generators going, and so that we had a lot of people that were there to still help. So I just wanted to touch on gratitude for what we already have, and I know it's unfortunate. We've been through so many atrocities, but at the same time, we're resilient. So we, we just need to tighten it up and be more resilient, and hold these people accountable for what they created.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I will, my last comment is, is on PG&E's, not necessarily behavior, but their, their lack of personal knowledge. I feel fortunate enough that they didn't do this to Lake County, or else I would be really upset about it. But to forget that they're shutting down counties and not calling their names on the phone conference shows how lack of...
their names on the phone conference, shows how lack of personal connections they have to the people that they're affecting with their shutdowns. I think they missed 2 counties on one phone call, twice, both for questions and both for stating that they were going to be shut down. When they asked, they said, oh, yes, yes, you will. The other one is, they told us it would be based on humidity, wind, and I also had some wind in my area as well, but it wasn't sulfur fire-type wind. So it's humidity, temperature, wind, and then they also said boots on the ground. I'd like to know what boots on the ground they have, and when they're here, is it during the re-energization part, that they have boots on the ground to tell them? Are they truly communicating with them, or are they only using the W sock, or whatever it's called over in San Francisco, for their weather patterns to tell you when they're going to re-energize? Because I just really feel like we're lacking boots on the ground and knowledge of what's truly happening here, because to tell me there's 77 miles an hour wind on St. Helena does not mean there's 77 mile an hour winds going on in Clear Lake or Lakeport. And I know that Dale mentioned that as well during one of the re-energization conferences, and unfortunately, they didn't listen to that. And again, the lack of personal connection, they can't even pronounce certain counties correctly, because they just don't know. And to me, that is a complaint that I would like to file with PG&E, is, we need somebody here, and I know we've requested that this time, which I'm happy to have. We need somebody here who knows who we are, that's not going to call Middletown Middleton, like we heard on the news when the valley fire happened. We need somebody who understands what we're personally going through, and what's going on, boots on the ground, not somebody from San Francisco in an office where they're not losing electricity, to understand what our needs are and what our situation truly is. Because I really feel like the phone calls have proven that there's absolutely a disconnect between what our needs are, what we're experiencing, and what they're going through over there in San Francisco. So that would be my personal statement back to PG&E.
Anything further from the board?
I just want the public to know that we are doing what, everything we can in our power as a government, to reach the, our state officials, to let them know, you know, how this is affecting our community. I thank you for coming out. We have a stack of emails, too, that we'll be going through, and I know many businesses lost money, and that's one of my concerns, is we're already struggling here in Lake County, and to do this to us is horrible. So we are doing everything in our power to make sure this doesn't happen again, but being prepared, and we will be reaching out to our state officials.
Yeah, one last thing, too.
I know that in coordination with Dale, we really appreciate, got in conversation, looking for a resource center in South County. Also mentioned Cobb Rock. I don't know if anybody reached out to you from PG&E about a resource center, but I know in South County, we're working to get one set up in the Casino parking lot with PG&E, working through contract right now to get that done, so at least we have a resource center. We talked about the senior center, but the, you know, the parking lot just isn't big enough there, and I know they made peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and stuff, even with the power out last time, so we're going to try and do it over there. So just be aware, it is coming. I know the notices have started to go out, if you're going to be affected, we've got phone calls, at least in my own. PG&E is responsible for all that, but just, I just want to say, be prepared today, and, you know, obviously, we'll do everything we can to help the community. Well, it's out.
Thank you. We're going to go on to our 7.5 item, consideration of contract change order number 1, for the South Shore Behavioral Health Roof Project Bid #18-24. Lars.
Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Front of the board for consideration is contract change order number 1, for the South Shore Behavioral Health Roof Project, Bid #18-14. This change order addresses 2 general topics during construction, which should, this should be the only change order that we see for the project, since we are just about done. All we have is a punch list item, or punch list to go through. So, 2 items. One is the removal and replacement of some plywood, it's called substrate, in the memorandum. So just for clarity, that is some 4 sheets of plywood. And then raising curbs on 5 HVAC units that were on the roof, that are on the roof. It was recognition that those curbs, where the HVAC units sit, needed to be raised slightly, primarily for water intrusion purposes. Total cost of the combination of both of those change orders, $2,590 for revised total contract cost of $220,290.
Any questions or comments from the board?
1% change is not bad.
Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seen a move, and I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the contract change order number 1, for the South Shore Behavioral Health Roof Project Bid #18-14.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lars.
Thank you.
Our 7.2 item, discussion and consideration of letter...
Nope.
We have to read it, and then we'll push it. Letter of intent to sell 7175 South Center Drive, Clear Lake, to Lake Transit Authority. I've been asked for this item to be pulled for later consideration at another date.
Yeah. I put this on the agenda, and we needed more materials to keep moving forward. Hopefully, this will be back on the agenda sooner than later.
So, let's...
You're going to pick a date?
Let's do a motion.
I'm hoping for the 5th, but it all depends on...
Let's just do "date uncertain."
Just hold off until he's ready.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just, yeah, we don't need to put a date.
I'm hopeful for sooner than later.
And do we need a motion for that, to pull it? Okay. Consensus. Our 7.3, discussion and direction to staff on the Dig Once policy ordinance. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I'm going to ask David Espinoza, I believe is your last name, to please come to the front. He's going to have, he's had much more experience with dealing with this. He's been working with the Economic Development Corporation, and also their subcommittee, which is BARC, which is for, I'm not even going to, I'm going to ask Carol to tell me what that stands for, BARC.
Business of Systems Attraction Response.
Thank you. And what they've been work, one of the things they've been working on, and they was talked to us last time when David was here for the broadband internet, was the Dig Once policy. And so, the Dig Once policy is, if there's a project where there's going to be any trenches dug out, or roads redone, where there's the capability of putting in some infrastructure for extending your, no matter what it is, if it's a sewer pipe, if it's extending water pipe, if it's extending fiber optics for broadband internet, that they get a phone call. And if they're interested in accompanying this project, which would be a whole lot cheaper for them to accompany a project, then they can go ahead and take part in placing their infrastructure, which would be only at their costs, not at the cost of the actual project that's being done. So anything in addition would cost the telecommunication company. The idea is to ensure that, when we do a dig once, that we can have a 5-year moratorium on digging it up again. That way, we can get everybody involved. And the last time we were here, we had Sean Swatash from MediaCom that was here saying that he supports the Dig Once policy, and wants to work with us to follow this policy. I would like, so I'm putting forward the draft that was made by David and his team at the Upstate California Connect Consortium, and I put forward the exact draft that was provided to BARC. I would like to make a change to that draft, since I'm not part of BARC, I didn't want to make any changes prior to providing it to you, which was in the attachments. I would like that we work and find out what the standard is for the fiber optic cable infrastructure, so that if nobody says, yes, I want to install this infrastructure, that we install the conduit, and then in the future, rent it out to the telecommunication companies for when they are ready to put in infrastructure. Because I don't think that a 5-year moratorium makes sense if we need that infrastructure there, and then they come in 2 years later and say, hey, we want to install fiber optic cables for broadband internet deployment, that we say, no, sorry, we have a 5-year moratorium. So rather than, again, breaking our ground that we've just redone, and it looks good, why don't we put in the conduit ourselves, and then make them pay for using our conduit? I spoke with David, it's about $2 to $5 a linear foot, so the expense is not huge, but that's something that I would just suggest to the board, that that would be one change I would make to the draft that was provided to you. The idea today is just say, yes, we're interested in a Dig Once policy. If so, we'll go through Anita's office with the draft that we have, make sure that special districts, Community Development, and Public Works looks through the draft that we have, make whatever changes is needed, and then come back to the board with the actual ordinance for us to make a decision. I didn't want to use staff time without knowing how the board felt about moving forward on the Dig Once policy. And if David has anything to add on what I may or may not have said, change anything I may have said that was incorrect, please do so.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Supervisor, my name is David Espinoza. I would like to provide some comments regarding this Dig Once ordinance. This ordinance is a step forwards towards accelerating expansion of high-speed and high-capacity broadband services in Lake County. This ordinance will allow for the coordination between public utilities, telecom companies, internal service providers, and the county to install conduit for fiber optic deployments every time the ground is open in the public right-of-way. This coordination will lead to a cost reduction when carrying out broadband infrastructure deployments, which will allow both telecom companies and internal service providers to expand services in a cost-effective manner, to reach areas that previously they were not able to reach, because it was just too expensive to carry out that build-out. Some federal studies point that this cost reduction, in some cases, can reach up to 90% of savings for carrying out these deployments. In the same manner, telecom companies and ISPs will be able to carry out cost-effective upgrades, also to their existing networks, and increase capacity to better serve residential areas, businesses, and industrial areas, and also community and institutions that currently needs higher speeds and higher capacity. The cost reduction and cost-effective deployments are achieved due to the coordination and sharing of the expenses, as Supervisor Sabatier mentioned. To install, it will be, it will be less expensive than if each company independently will carry out the same excavation project, in many cases, along the same road, but just at different times. So this will be more cost-efficient, and trying to get all the companies within the same time, which will accelerate this broadband expansion process. In summary, this Dig Once ordinance will help Lake County towards accelerating broadband infrastructure deployments, and to provide that high-capacity and high-speed internet services that many areas need. And if you have any question, I'm open to, there is any questions or concerns that you might have.
Thank you, David. And I just want to add, I don't think this happened, but during, for instance, the project that was just finished in District 1, the Anderson Springs Sewer System, had we had the Dig Once policy, we would have offered to have others lay tracks along that same pathway of the sewer system, to add more infrastructure leading up to that area. And so I think this is a great opportunity to make sure that from now on, when, if there's interest, and if it's approved, that we have the ability to really move forward with building up our infrastructure as much as we can. Caltrans has changed their rules, so that anytime they do a rebuild on the highways, they automatically deploy broadband internet as well along their highways. We're working right now with them, because the Highway 29 expansion was approved prior to this law, so they're not planning to do so. We're trying to work with them to say, come on, it's 2019, you need to do the rules of 2019, not from 40 years ago when this project started. So they've changed their laws, and so we're looking to facilitate that same type of program, so that we can make sure that we can get the best infrastructure at the cheapest rate for all of us.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Oh, there's someone coming up. If you could state your name, and then you have 3 minutes.
Joan Moss, citizen. I go down Cobb 175 to 29 to get to Lakeport. And my neighbors and I have often been wondering what is going on on Highway 29, and at that junction, Highway 29 and Cobb 175. There are all kinds of trucks, and there's 4 big black wires and cables. And if this is the broadband internet trench, I believe public, like me and my neighbors, need to know what it is. It's not Caltrans. I believe it's what this gentleman was speaking about. And if there could be a public service story about these trucks that don't have a company on them, and they're digging trenches and putting in cables, what does it actually mean? I'm a college-educated musician, writer, but I would like, I think the public needs to know what is going on, so they understand about the holes and the big black cables coming out of the holes, and who's doing this, and what it means. We both live on a Wildcat Road, where there is no cell phone reception. We have AT&amp;T phones, and we're both licensed drivers. We're all licensed drivers, but...
So Joan, we're looking at a...
I'm just suggesting that the public learn more.
So, do you think the no-dig policy would be a good policy, or should we go forth?
I'll have to read it and see if I understand it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No-dig policy.
All right, one dig. One dig policy. Sorry. One-time dig policy. Trying to stay on what we're talking about. Any other further public comments?
And I'm not sure what's happening on 29, but I'm sure Rob Brown would know.
Thanks for coming. It's not the gentleman.
Anything further from the board? I think this is a great policy to go and look at. I think it's forward-thinking, and that's what we need to be doing here in Lake County. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I definitely think it's a good concept. The only question I would have, Bruno, on the information is, you know, adding the extra conduit, there is a cost. Every project has a budget. There is a cost to that. And then my question would be, you know, where's that coming from in the budget in the project? I know we're going to reach out, it's going to be at cost. If someone else wants to do that, they would pay to do it. But if we have a Dig Once policy, you know, what I'd like to see is that we refine and say, you know, if they don't go for it, no one wants to do it, that, you know, we need to understand the cost, and if it's in the budget, we can do it.
Right, right.
That would be my thing, because every project is so tight, especially with the grant funds and other stuff, talking about the sewer project, you know, to add another $25,000 or $10,000 to put this conduit in, and hopefully later on, someone will come use it. That's all needs to be taken into consideration. That would be my only concern, but I think it definitely is a good idea. Infrastructure is something we've talked about, had that conversation earlier, and this is a big part of it. So, just refining the ordinance in that manner, and understanding the cost would be my concern.
Supervisor Brown?
Just real brief, I think it's a great concept, too. That's all it is, is a concept. Did you turn that off?
No.
I mean, you left Jones on, but you turned mine off. So, you know, we need to hear from staff at some point, what we really can do, because it sounds really good. Put the sewer in, in Anderson Springs, and the internet, a lot of times, you can't do that, because there's such a separation between water and sewer, and electric, and all this stuff, that we really need to know what we can do, and what can go in on the bottom, what can go out, you know, that kind of stuff. So, it's not always that simple, but I think there's a lot of opportunity that we can use it, and we need to use it every chance we get, so.
And I have reached out to Public Works and Community Development, and also special districts. I will let you speak for yourself, but we did have the question of, would this work? And from what I received from Jan was, we can make this work, as long as it doesn't stop our projects from moving forward. And I got the same level of answer from Scott. But again, I think every project is going to be different, and for my suggestion that I offered, it could be with a caveat, does it fit within this project, and do we have the funding for it, rather than making it a mandatory thing?
Well, you know, and you're right, I'm glad you brought this up, because we've talked about this also in the past, but it's not just about this, it's, you know, repair wants, and, you know, we're going in and doing roads, let's encourage underground infrastructure that's going to eventually go in, do it, get it done.
Right.
Because we're getting ready to do this road. Road projects aren't quick, so that gives time. There's a water project out in Buckingham that comes to mind, you know, an extension out there. So, and we did all those roads out there, and anyway, so you're right, and you're on the mark with wanting to do this once, because South Main is a classic example. And you're on the mark with wanting to do this once because South Main is a classic example. We know something's going to happen at South Main. Get that infrastructure in now, that underground, get ready to do that because that's a perfect opportunity to do that and get that all underground out there.
Right.
Supervisor Crandall?
Like you said, getting it done while they dig, the dig once. And then just looking at the summaries that were brought, most other entities, cities, counties are moving in this direction as well. But I want to touch on what Supervisor Brown said because, and just an example, it's not a project, but it's, there's a lot of earth moving and whatnot going on with the roundabout over in Clear Lake Oaks. And there was a situation where there were some folks concerned about the passage. And like, if we can make this change now, you can prevent having to reopen another project later. We're going through that process, so that's why I like initiatives like this.
And I have to say one thing, or else Michelle will tell me I never said it. We would be the first county in the state of California to take on this ordinance. Otherwise, it's been cities only so far.
Go to county.
I could dig that.
But we're not competitive.
Anything further? I think staff has direction that we want to, we want to move forward with this. Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier, for bringing this to our attention. And I think with that, I have done everything that needed to be done and opened...
Oh, wait, Worth. I neglected to say the names of the people that were appointed, so I'd like to...
So I need a motion then to reopen 7.4.
I will move to reopen 7.4.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to reopen 7.4. Consideration of the following appointments. Western Region Town Hall, because we didn't read the name, so we'll just go over that again.
So I would like to revise my motion to appoint Linda Alexander as the new member-at-large and reappoint Margaret Sanders on the Upper Lake Worth Town Hall.
With that, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have done everything. Okay. With that, we will go into closed session, but before, I will read the items. 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code Section 54956.9D1, Operating Engineers Local Number Three versus County of Lake. And 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code Section 54956.9D1, John versus County of Lake at All. With that, we're in closed session.